I'd like to reconvene the June 28, 2016 Stafford County School Board meeting. I would ask that you all would rise for the invocation and then Mr. Hirons, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
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 Thank you very much. We will move on to item 6.01, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
(inaudible)
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions, additions?
(inaudible)
We're good. We're good. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and the agenda is approved. We will go on to special presentations. This is done by our advisory committees, which we enjoy at the end of the year to hear about their work. We will first hear from the Technology Advisory Committee.[119.02][119.02](laughing) You even get a cheering squad.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Benson, it's my pleasure this evening to present you with the final report of the Technology Advisory Committee. First, I'd like to thank the Technology Department staff and all the members of the Advisory Committee for their interest and the time they spent in working on technology for Stafford County public schools. Before I review the brief with you, allow me to add some perspective, which I hope will impact the way you view the information in the brief, and the whole school technology program. It's a perspective I have from spending a great deal of time with your IT department this year, and while you may be aware of some of the things I'm going to say, please take this as a positive reinforcement of what you already know. First, one of the greatest strengths of your program is the fact that your primary technology staff are experienced educators. That includes your instructional technology resource teachers supporting each school. Your technology staff has an intimate understanding of the purpose and mission of the schools, and that is priceless. Maybe that's the norm for primary and secondary schools, but I can tell you from lifelong military experience and now experience in business, that isn't the norm in government and in many commercial entities. More recent experience has shown me the trials and tribulations of IT staff who really does not understand the mission of the business that they're in. I wish I had your technology staff working for me. Beyond their experience and insight, they're engaging, enthusiastic, beyond what experience and beyond what I have to experience in most technology support staffs. Now, if you can bear with me, let me do a quick review of the history of technology in Stafford County public schools. And believe me, there's a method to my madness here. It's adding perspective to what you're going to see in the brief. Since the 1980s, Stafford County Public Schools has had some form of computer education, but most of that has been focused on replacement of manual-type tools. Computer labs, fixed and mobile, entered the scene in about 1990s. In the mid to late 90s, most schools got limited internet access for instruction and administration. Approximately 10 years ago, the situation changed significantly, and teaching and learning started to take on the flavor of computer-aided instruction. 2005, you've got wide area networks. 2005 and '06, you've got wireless infrastructure. 2005, email for almost all staff. But perhaps the most important milestone was in 2005 and '06, you brought instructional technology resource teachers into each one of your schools. These are the people who really allowed operationalization of technology because regardless of the infrastructure and the equipment and the software, none of that is any good unless they know how to use it. Later on, your fiber projects started in 2011. You started doing some blended learning, remote instruction, and you're on the verge of starting collaboration with Google Applications for Education. You've evolved your technology infrastructure and tools. It's generally parallel with government and industry, but now you're on the verge of starting a new journey, and that's full integration of technology with learning environments and methods. It's going to become an ever-larger port of total education experience, and we can't go back. We can only go forward. One final point that I'd like to point out here is the need for digital citizenship. I never heard of that term until Dave Mira told me that a couple days ago, but it makes all the sense in the world, and it parallels with the citizenship that you're teaching right now in C5W and in your strategic plans. How do you use technology responsibly? I deal with that every day with non-digital natives working for me. Gee, guys, turn off your phones in the meeting. Gee, could you quit surfing the net while we're trying to have a lecture here? Who's the one who changed the settings on the common computer? And oh, by the way, remember, guys, on company business, you're not supposed to be texting while you're driving. I can't say that you can teach your students all of that, but it needs to start at this level. And with that, let me start the brief. Desktop computers due for replacement. Based upon my experience in industry and government, you're pretty much on track. You're doing very well. In the future, though, there's going to be a relook at what types of platforms are needed. Do you need less desktops? You'll still have some. Do you need more of tablets and what are known as Chromebooks? And perhaps the most important part is, I understand that the school's division is getting standardization of those things across all schools. Very, very important. Projected laptop status. Very similar to other computers. Need to relook what the real requirements are. Laptops, I consider a generic term. In today's world, you may want to replace those with other types of systems. However, as we look at this, we're in pretty good shape. None of the older computers are causing problems with education, reliability or capability, as I understand it. I don't think I can tell you much that you don't already know about your fiber optic WAN. All I can say is, this is really a great news story, and it's something that's really critical in this age when high bandwidth capability is absolutely necessary for educational Security equipment grant. Once again, for the third year in a row, your division has received $100,000 grant for security equipment associated with IT. While I, as a parent, am not really thrilled that we have to have this level of security, I truly, personally, have great confidence in Stafford County public schools when it comes to using security equipment and providing the most secure schools available. Student information system. I think everyone on the board is more familiar with this than I am. You've been at it for several years, had a few bumps on the front end, but that's not unusual for an enterprise-type system. Now that the major issues are behind you, a number of the advanced features and details are being worked, but it's really important to understand that enterprise systems like this are never really hands-off. Continuous work with the vendor, other school divisions, upgrading, tweaking will take place for the life of this system. BYOD. I understand that the board has previously received information and a brief on BYOD, so I won't be telling you anything new. In the following pages, I'd like to review the key questions and the results from those questions. And just a note is that I understand that the management of this survey provided a little bit better focus than last year, so the results have changed significantly. In engagement perceptions. Student engagement is perceived to be 10% better than it was the prior year. Still have a lot of work to do, but also the other categories, meaning the neutral and disagree, have moved more toward the positive. Achievement perceptions. Perception of achievement advantages in the agree category are up 20%. That's pretty significant, and the other categories also show positive movement. Training. And I'll echo again what I'd said about your information instructional resource teachers. As I understand it, the significant increase in being able to adequately utilize BYOD is a result of engagement by administrators and by having formalized training through the instructional resource teachers. Again, a very large part, you may know this, but I personally had not understood just how large a role the resource teachers play within the schools. Behavior. Well, there's some work to do on that one, but it's continuing. How BYOD is used. Now, this one I consider perhaps the largest indicator. The use has gone from very basic research to much more sophisticated use, that type that would be used in institutions of higher learning. It's an encouraging trend and is leading you toward really integrating technology into learning modes and methods. Now, before I move on, just a note is that, from my point of view, and again, just an opinion, BYOD really is not an educational change or a technology change. It's a cultural change. Cultural changes take much time, and typically, a minimum of three years is needed to really show progress. So I would expect improvement in the third year and then looking a lot better in the fourth year. I'm an impatient man, like many people are. However, I do realize that cultural change takes time. Your collaboration initiative. Google Applications for Education was chosen by a group of over 100 representatives from all schools, your staff, administrators, and I was fortunate enough to be in that group. I consider myself a non-voting member because I'm not working in the schools, but I think they made a very good decision, and I also believe the methodology by which this Google Applications for Education was chosen is exactly the right way to make a selection and to achieve buy-in from stakeholders. What this will provide you, and many of you probably already knows this, is not a replacement for any current software, but additional capability, collaboration. They'll be adding student and staff email, but most importantly, the implementation is going to be paced over 12 to 18 months, what might be called, in common terms, crawl, walk, run. Take it slowly. Don't interfere with other initiatives. Make sure each part of this is stable prior to moving forward. Technology Advisory Committee recommendations. You've done a lot of work this year on your strategic plan. C5W initiative, I believe, is well-established, and I believe those were established so they provide a guiding framework for most other initiatives within the school division. Well, they need to provide the framework to decide how the technology will be used, and that will, in turn, decide what technology items are purchased, how they are integrated. And perhaps something that's also important to understand is that, in today's world, learning can be done from just about anywhere, based on a cloud-based environment with almost any tool that can access the internet, and your learning will be moving in that direction. Stafford County Public Schools has only begun to see the full benefit of technology in a learning environment, and you're moving forward. Your questions, please.
Any questions? Ms. Egan, you start.
Thanks, Walter. Appreciate it. There was a slide that showed the map, once again, of Stafford County and where the fiber optics were laid out. I remember seeing that several years ago, and at some point, there was supposed to be connectivity between Margaret Brent and Hartwood Elementary in order to kind of close that gap there. Whatever happened to that plan? Do we...
I will have to defer to the people who know what they're talking about on that subject.
Dr. Mira?
Dr. Mira, kindly join me.
Thanks. So, the conduit is laid all the way to Hartwood, so it's connected with a little pipe that'll carry the fiber in it, and we ran into one little glitch with the expansion of 17, so we're kind of going around a newly-developed parking area, and I expect that to be completed before school starts.
Oh, good. Okay.
So, we're good.
Good, good, good.
Margaret Brent also.
Awesome. So that'll close that gap there, so if there's any other issues, there's another way to get the fiber optics connectivity on the other side.
Yes.
Okay. And then, just one other question. I understand that SOL testing will be able to be completed on Chromebooks. I guess the state is looking at making that happen?
Yes, they are. We are right on a step with that. We have engineering staff that are attending VDOE sessions, and we'll be ready to go with that. We won't be ready to go 100% with Chromebooks, but we'll certainly, some schools are going to be ahead of others because of the wiring and so on that we're doing.
Gotcha. So does that look like it might happen?
We're surveying every single school and doing a readiness survey, school by school, to let them know what their capabilities and limitations are.
Okay. And I know I'm just, you might not be able to answer this. Just pull a number out of the air if you want. If we were to purchase a Chromebook for every student in the county, countywide, to make sure that somebody had, you know, something to work with, and we don't buy any more laptops, how much are we looking at to do this countywide to make sure that every student, 27,000 students...
27,000 times between $250 and $300.
That's how much there is, $200. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gidney?
Yeah. Mr. Mira, if you wouldn't mind staying there. You may be able to address this question a little bit easier than perhaps the advisory committee could, and you may need to get back to me, so I'm prefacing all of this. There's a new state code that I'm sure you're aware of that requires computer science and what they call computational thinking in all curriculum K through 12. It just passed. There was a buildup, it was presented, and it was just signed into law, so it's state code. Do we have the necessary hardware and the necessary software and the necessary computers within our system to be able to meet the needs of our students in relation to this new state code? You may need to get back to me on that one.
If we don't, we will.
Okay. Good answer. Thank you.
Mr. Hirons?
Thanks for the presentation. Has the Technology Advisory Committee taken up recommendations for our staff, our teacher workstations? Right now, most of our teachers, I believe, are tied to desktops. Is that still correct, Dr. Mira?
Every classroom has a desktop connected to the projector, and as this collaboration project gets moving and those four committees that you saw, that's part of their work to make design and recommendations to how we want to move forward. We won't make that decision in a vacuum, so that's probably the best answer I could give you, is that we're working towards whatever the needs are going to be, meeting the needs.
So that's what I'm getting at, is working towards either recommendation or analysis. I don't want to preface or lead you down a certain path, but for our teaching staff in particular, any staff that has a workstation for it to be a laptop, as we're replacing desktops, replacing them with laptops for the regular teachers, because, say, at Stafford High School where the teachers have workstations at their desks, which are outside of the classrooms. In my view, and, you know, I've worked in a lot of environments that are modern workspace where it's very mobile. They give you a laptop, you've got Wi-Fi inside, outside of the building, and you go sit in the park and do your work, or go down in the library and do your work. But for our teachers to have that mobility option, to be able to either work anywhere they're at within the building and/or take that device home and be able to do their work at home on a school-owned device, so we're not relying on them to have something for our home device as well. So, that's what I was getting at, is the advisory committee taking that thought and future of our workforce devices.
Yeah, my understanding is that's part of the study in replacement of the computers and collaboration, is what is the right device for a particular use, a particular location. I, like you, am used to having a laptop with a docking station. However, I can work any place, provided that I've got connectivity.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. That was a good briefing, as usual, Walter. You do a lot for the committees of this Stafford County Public Schools, and I appreciate that. Takes a lot of time, and it's always good to see you up there. Dr. Mira, so what's going on with Ferry Farm? When are they going to get their, what's the holdup there?
What's the question, sir?
Right there on the map, the proposed line. Are we waiting for a rebuild, or what do we...
No. Ferry Farm is going to be done. Yeah.
When is that?
Can I get back to you?
Yeah. I'd love to get back to you.
I'll give you a specific time, but every school will be connected.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions from board members? I'd like to thank you all very much for coming in there. I would like to echo some of what Mr. Hirons was saying about the devices. I would think somewhat, especially in our special education areas where we're on the floor and we're always testing, that that would be, in my opinion, maybe a really great place to start as we begin to look into the teaching, but I will certainly wait for additional guidance, but I think that is something we really should be looking at. So, thank you very much, Walter, for all that you do.
You're very welcome, and if I could close by saying thank to you and to the school staff for keeping Stafford County Public Schools moving into the future in using technology. Thank you.
Thank you.[1484.83][1484.83](applause) Well, next, we will have our Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee report to the school board. We're waiting for you to break out in song.[1504.23][1504.23](laughing) Or dance. Just joking.
Maybe next year we'll do a musical.
You know, on that note, I've been awful upset. I asked Dave Vida, and I didn't follow up with the chair or board clerk or PIO, but at some point, I sure would love to see the ukuleles down here giving us a little concert, either pre-meeting or right at the start of the meeting. Next year, right?
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, esteemed board members, and Dr. Benson. My name is Megan McCullough, and I live in the Acquah District. For the past two years, I have served as Chair of the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee. It is my honor this evening to present our end-of-the-year report for 2015, 2016, which includes highlights from this past school year, as well as some of our committee's goals moving forward. Before I continue, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge any fellow committee members in attendance tonight, as well as any of our Fine and Performing Arts teachers who may be attending. I invite you to read the mission of this committee. Tonight's presentation is formed around C5W. We would like to share how the arts play a powerful role in developing each of the six all-century skills. First, we have communication. Through the arts, all-century learners communicate effectively through performances, compositions, and exhibitions. The arts are a means of self-expression, and artists communicate to their audience in a variety of ways. Presenting work, engaging in discussion related to the artist's intent, as well as communicating non-verbally to an audience, are all facets of the work students do in the arts. Interactive exhibits at the Fine Arts Festival promote the arts and encourage our Stafford County families to engage in discussion about why the arts are so important in educating the whole child. Collaboration. Through the arts, all-century learners work together to achieve a common goal. This can take the form of marching bands, string quartets, set design and construction, or collaborating to create an art installation or mural, as you witness in the following time-lapsed video. In arts classes, students learn to honor personal strengths as well as the strengths of others. Throughout the artistic process, students learn about themselves, their peers, and even their teachers. They practice taking risks, working together, and encouraging one another, learning how to give, receive, and respond to critique, all of which help students practice sustained reflection. This advisory committee is also committed to collaboration, as next year, we will be working with the Student Services Department and hopefully the Special Education Advisory Committee to provide our students and community access to sensory-friendly performances. Critical thinking. Through the arts, all-century learners use their knowledge and skills to solve problems, whether that consists of collecting research to inform their next art project, solving set design problems, or figuring out how to extend their range on the clarinet. Through the arts, students make decisions about their learning and how to best present their thoughts and ideas. I ask you to focus on our student demonstrator and her ability to think critically as she helps a younger child properly hold and play the cello. Our committee is thinking critically about the courses and curricula that we cur...
Picasso once said this, he said that all children are born artists. The problem is to remain an artist as we grow up. I believe this passionately, that we don't grow into creativity, we grow out of it. Or rather, we get educated out of it. So why is this?
The creative process is a difficult one, and one that must be taught and nurtured. We must teach kids to actively take risks, and then guide them if they are not successful, just as we encourage the same in our teachers. Our young artists take risks, receive feedback, reflect, and try again, because our arts courses encourage and demand creative thought. Due to the support of this board, Central Office Administration, and Stafford High School Administration and Music Staff, we are excited to offer a music technology course in the fall. Listen to what our students have to say about this new addition.
Hi, Erin and Gabby. We wanted to know, what first interested you about taking music technology?
I saw the posters, and I saw that you could create stuff with GarageBand, and I tried experimenting with it before, and I wasn't really good at it, so I was really interested in learning how to use that particular app. And I heard it from my friends, and them talking about it, and I went and talked to Miss Yee, and what she said about the class, really interested me, and I wanted to further my experience with music, so I thought it'd be a good idea.
What kinds of things do you hope to do in the class?
I hope to learn how to write my own music, and use technology to help me out, and how to use the music that I write in other things, like making videos. I also, I was excited about making my own music, and getting feedback from people that are doing similar stuff around me, to see what they, see I could improve on, and just further my experience.
Through the arts, all-century learners make a positive impact on our community and beyond. Service projects, such as Band Together to Fight Hunger, continue to feed the community, with over 21,000 meals donated in the fall of 2015. Our middle and high school drama improv teams participated in the third annual improv festival, where all ticket sales and silent auction proceeds were donated to Broadway cares and Empowerhouse. Our students perform in the community, at nursing homes and senior dances. They discover a need and figure out how to fulfill that need. Lastly, we are proud to share next year's soup bowl project, that will be a joint endeavor between this committee and the high school art students, to design and create bowls that will be sold in conjunction with the soup dinner, with all proceeds going to feed those in our community. Finally, we have wellness. Through the arts, all-century learners are mindful of their well-being, and that of their peers. While spending so much time together, much like a family, art students become tuned into each other's needs. They are physically and actively engaged in their learning and the artistic process, nurturing their minds and their bodies. The arts truly are their own form of wellness. Just consider the coloring trend that has taken the nation by storm right now, or adults who continue to play a musical instrument later in life, including one of our own assistant principals. And here's a little bit of research on the importance of wellness. And as you can see, art students engage in all six skills, because Stafford County provides a rigorous, well-rounded education for our students. As I invite our Vice Chair, Sidney Kaplan, choir and drama student at Colonial Forge High School, to wrap up our presentation, please take a moment to read the powerful quote by our First Lady, that I hope resonates with each one of you.
As a student, I can definitely say that the arts have helped me in a countless number of ways. Through the arts, I've been able to discover who I am as a person using creativity. I joined the Fine and Performing Arts Advisory Committee because I wanted to have an active role in making sure other students in our community received the same grade arts education. I was so happy to find a group of people passionate about giving all students a chance to explore the arts and discover themselves like I did. Stafford County teachers provide amazing opportunities for students. There is no doubt that they share the vision for all students to be all-century learners. While our committee is not making any formal recommendations this year, we hope that through your attendance at arts events, interactions with the outstanding arts educators and students, and by hearing our presentation this evening, that you will continue to recognize the importance of the arts and support the growing needs of our program. While our program remains strong, we still have much to accomplish. We appreciate your attention, and look forward to providing another year of service to the school board.
Thank you, ladies. Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Hirons?
There's some. Have you guys looked at, number one, how is our population of art students doing? You know, is our percentage of students in the arts remaining pretty steady? Are we declining, or do we happen to be rising at all?
So, what's wonderful about our K5 programs is all students take art and music courses. In sixth grade, because of our middle school schedule, all sixth graders take a fine or performing art. And then, truly and honestly, our numbers tend to, they vary from year to year, and I could get you that data if you're very interested, I do have it. Typically, the band kind of has evened out in terms of music numbers. Our strings numbers have actually went up in enrollment, which is why, you know, we're looking at maybe recommending and asking for some additional string staffing next year. It varies, dependent upon, you know, certain requirements that perhaps the state might have. For example, a couple years ago, we took quite a hit with the addition of the economics and personal finance course, because it took away an elective for our students. But above and beyond, we do find that our kids who come into the arts courses, that they do remain in the arts courses, or sometimes they re-enter. Especially, we get students who have, maybe, that are senior, who have an extra elective, and so they come into drama or art, it's a little more difficult to, you know, go and enter into band or strings. But, you know, for the most part, we do have pretty stagnant...
And you touched on what I was going to follow up with. If the committee has done any work on what the state may be doing, anything, they might have in their pipeline any favorable legislation to get arts, more arts back into the schools, because we constantly get these additions, and like, the coding thing is great, but what are we going to have to cut to be able to get that in? And you guys can preach it as loud as anybody, that arts, it's always the arts that gets cut. And it's something that, you know, is very frustrating to me. I would love to see us be able to provide many more art opportunities to all of our students throughout, so they're not making that decision at sixth grade of what they'll be doing for the next, you know, six years, or five years.
Right. It's a really tough decision, and I know a lot of students who go into sixth grade are counseled maybe to take band or orchestra if they're interested, because we don't really have an entry point for band or orchestra, especially at the upper levels. It becomes more difficult.
So thank you guys for the work you do, or there for you. And we do take note, I think probably, we know what your recommendations are continuously. And I think we talk about that every budget year, and we probably will be next year as well, continuously.
And thank you for your support.
Ms. Healy?
I'd be interested in seeing, not now, because we won't have it, but if there are any increase in our high schools where we're doing the additions, adding the special, you know, facilities for the arts, to see if there is an increase in the enrollment in the courses there. So it's something to just think about, you know, as those additions come online, because I know there really was an intention on the part of the board to, you know, give that, you know, additional resources and opportunities, you know, to the students.
And I appreciate that, because we're very excited to offer music technology at Stafford High School. You know, it's going to be a new program, but we already have three sections full of Music Tech One students, so it's about 70 to 90 students. And that's the perfect example. And as Brook and Forge have their orchestra rooms, I think what we'll continue to see is, when orchestra directors in particular are able to be full-time in buildings, you're able to forge relationships with students and kind of create that, you know, that vertical piece, and moving kids up and transitioning them. So I do agree with you, and I'm very pleased about the way the board has moved with the facilities. And, you know, I commend Scott and his team for helping us through that as well, and for your support in that. So thank you.
Ms. Kidby, did you have a question? Oh, you didn't. Oh, sorry, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you so much for the briefing. It was a good briefing. I stay and I remain concerned about FTEs, Live People, Teachers, right? So I love the videos. All my kids are musicians, I'm a musician, Dr. Benson's a musician. Sometimes it does help mentally, especially after these school board meetings, I feel like going home, playing for about 20 hours, okay? However, the shared services, you know, the arts and the music starts in elementary school. And we have, you know, I think I would like to see, to make sure that we have a music teacher in this board, that's where we can affect change, is making sure we have a music and an art teacher in every elementary school, to start out with. Although, the community visibly sees the middle school band, and the strings, and the chorus, and then on into high school with the bigger and better things. However, you know, we need to keep, we need to keep an eye and keep our tabs and get that data to us about the FTEs, and making sure we have one per school, you know, sharing, and so...
So I can actually put your mind at ease. And art and music, we do have one full-time art and one full-time music teacher in every elementary school. One of the concerns that we're, you know, trying to address as we get through this next cycle, is that with the addition of the general education teachers, which is so wonderful for our class size numbers, is looking at how those numbers affect, the class size numbers, and the classes, the additional classes, affect how students and access art and music. So it could mean the difference between a five-day schedule and a six-day schedule. So one thing that I, I mean, I would ask you to consider in the future, is when you're looking at how many general education classes that you add, also consider how that looks in terms of your art, your music, your PE numbers. Because sometimes, although one full-time teacher is at every school for music and art, two for PE, one librarian, that sometimes does not meet the needs of a school that's eight or 900 students, and there becomes a need for itinerant support, which is actually how I started in this county many, many years ago.
And that's a good news story, and I didn't know that, I didn't think about that. And that's something that I would expect next year's Technology Advisory Committee to come brief us on, the number of, like I said, the video's great, and beautiful. Let's get the numbers up there, so we can make sure that we take care of your concerns, and the county's concerns.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Well, of course, you know, I have to comment on this particular topic. I always love that you all come, and I want to make sure, as we move into our new branding and our website and stuff, how we can reach out to the community, to make sure that all of our community knows about the great art stuff that goes on here, not just all of us who hear about it, the 27,000 students and their parents, but the other parts of our community, to make sure that they are welcomed and brought in. I think that's really important, as you mentioned about us re-examining our large schools, especially our large, well, any of them, but especially even our elementary, making sure that we ensure that those teachers are there. I'm always excited when we get that list of Teachers of the Year, and there's teachers, and there's music teachers, and there's arts and performing arts, because it's so important to our kids' development. You know, my heart is in the strings program, so it was wonderful, the things that we've been doing there, and I hope we can continue to do that, so... Any other closing comments? All right, thank you. Thank you so much, ladies. All right. Next, we will move on to citizen comments. I have a list with some names, we'll start with those, and then if you are also planning to speak, I would ask that you line up behind them after I give the instructions. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see the green, yellow, and red. When it gets to yellow, you have one minute remaining. When it gets to red, you have five seconds to wrap up where you are. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees, or division programs, services, or activities, may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. So I will read the first, the three names that I have on the sign-up sheet, and then if you also would like to speak, feel free to go ahead and line up on either side. First, I have Lee Terrace, second Stephanie Russell, and third Mark Edwards. If you all would just come to the podium in that order, and appreciate. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Lee Terrace, I represent Xerox. I feel like this is my home away from home. It's good to see all of you again. I've come to speak about the copier bid, and, you know, I've expressed my concerns, and more than anything, I really want to say thank you. I wasn't shy in standing here and telling you, you had a few problems with the procurement. I think I've done right by you to help find you some savings as well along the way. But in the developments in the last two weeks, I really do want to stand here and say thank you. I appreciate you being willing to rebid a piece of it. I understand with the tight timelines, your hands were tied on other pieces, but I do want to say I appreciate that. We did respond with both a 12- and 48-month term. One free piece of consulting I want to give you, because I know you had a closed-door meeting, and I don't know what, if any, decisions you've made, but just because I've been at this for 32 years, there's one thing you ought to know. Whoever you select, make sure it is explicitly written into your contract that there will be no removal charges at the end of the contract. It is not uncommon in this industry for someone to charge you removal charges, should you opt to go to another vendor, even though your contract is fulfilled. So I say that to you to try to do you yet another favor, and put a little more money into the coffers of the school district. Having said that, I'd urge you not to reward RICO, because these are the people that are squeezing you on the 48-month term, and basically, they were given a chance to rebid when we are not. You know, I don't know if other vendors were able to do that or not, but I hope you're asking yourself, is RICO really our partner, or simply a business associate who tried to get the most out of me? I'd ask you, as little as you know Xerox, and as little as you know me, are we doing right by you? Are we trying to help you out? Because I'll tell you, I think, I'm not positive, but I think this is the fourth time I've been to a board meeting and spoke, and every meeting has a different theme, except they all come down to one thing, you are all trying to do right by your constituents, you're all trying to provide... You're all trying to provide the best education you can. And one of the ways you help do that is get your basic services at better prices. That way you can pour the money into the educational process. So that being said, if you do decide to spec the bid out in 2017, as has been discussed, please, meet with us, meet with others in the industry if you like. And next time around, build your RFP to say, how do we procure devices that support the educational process, not just make copies? Because I think you're going to find the technology in the industry is really designed to support the educational process. We are very good at it. I would love to talk with you about that. And again, if you get nothing else out of tonight, get two things. Removal charges written into that contract free. And again, thank you. I really do appreciate you rebidding it.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board. I come to you as a, as a concerned parent. I'm here because of formal complaint that we filed against an assistant principal at Brookpoint High School back on March 16th. I will leave out the names and specifics for the purposes of this meeting, but I want to bring this to your attention and I assume you can have access to the complaint on Mr. Fitzgerald's desk. We followed the processes required by the district.
Ms. Russell, can you just introduce yourself for the?
I'm sorry. I'm Stephanie Russell. I'm a parent. Thank you. I don't know. Yeah. We followed the processes required by the district. It was further requested that we wait until the results of my son's hearing on the 15th of June. We did that as well. And to date, this complaint has gone largely ignored. It should not. In a nutshell, this administrator disclosed private and erroneous information to people outside of the school about my son that was used to punish him and destroy him academically. Despite repeated requests for a full investigation and for action to be taken in response to these, to this administrator's actions against my son, the HR director has done little beyond acknowledging that the complaint was received. The charges against my son were dismissed. There is no court case against him. I shared this information with the HR director on the very day we were notified of the decision. This alone should be more than sufficient to not only proceed with our complaint, but to restore my son's academic and athletic pursuits. And it's not an exaggeration to say that the courts when notified of this administrator's actions were disgusted by what was done to my son. I'm also here because, yes, I am the wife of the man who drives the white Nissan with the silent protest on his car toward the school system. I'm here because of the overwhelming support he has received for his protest and his messages from parents, students, community members, who have responded positively and who sadly have shared similar stories. The number of them could fill this room. It's worth noting that not one single individual has responded to him negatively. Honestly, our issue is not with the board. For the most part, what we experienced has been common sense and fairness. But your administrators, your boots on the ground, seem to care more about their next promotion than what, than about leading the students they're supposed to be in charge of. I don't know who this quote can be attributed to, but the worst reaction is an overreaction and it's very applicable here. This administrator had no problem going after my son, sharing his personal information with as many people as he could strictly for the purposes of destroying him. This should not be okay. When this information was recounted and validated by the court, they were as upset as we were and asked us to take action because they can't do anything. We asked the board to compel the HR director to investigate this person as per the complaint on file and give it the attention it deserves so it doesn't happen to another student. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Edwards. I'm a parent. I have four kids that, three kids that have gone through the school and one kid still in school. And I just happen to be the second vice president of the NAACP. The reason that I'm here today is an issue that was brought up about the incident that happened in North Stafford and that's still going on in all the schools, is to basically the dress code. First of all, I, like I say, the dress code is in the handbook. I have the handbook. My kids have the handbook. And all the handbook that I know of have the dress code that strictly says what the dress code is. But because of current events and issue that was brought up through me, through the NAACP about concerned parents, and also when I asked my kids about the incidents, they confirmed it. Well, it talks about the wearing of the Confederate flags. They say that, I'm not here to debate on either side if it's a good thing, it's a bad thing, how blacks feel about it, how whites feel about it. I'm just here to address that. It's in the handbook that says, if it's controversial or could cause problems or disruption within the school, it shouldn't be worn. And the first I thought, I asked my kids, was this a event like Freedom Week or something? And they say, no, this is continuous every day. You have kids, a group of kids from all the schools, not just the incident that happened in North Stafford. Also, because my kids, it's going on in Brookpoint. And I asked my daughter, they graduate, she's in college now, I asked, is the same thing going on when you were going to school? And they say, yes, it is. But the kids continue to wear clothing that display the Confederate flag and causing disruption and some kids are getting suspended from it, you know? But it's like nobody within, like I say, the principals or whoever, the schoolteachers are enforcing the regulation to say, hey, you can't wear that. And so like I say, well, now I'm not here to debate if it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, it's in the book. It said it shouldn't be done, but nobody is enforcing the rules. So, and that's what the problem is. Like I say, we're still having kids getting suspended for the incident on both sides. But if you enforce the basic regulations and say, hey, you can't wear that type of clothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I just have a couple of quick things regarding program travel times and cell phones. Two weeks ago, I came and talked to you about the long travel times required for some of our high school programs, which are 40 minutes a day and more, and the loss of the instructional time. I asked for a response in writing as to how we're able to meet our state mandated instructional requirements. I'm thinking back to when we used to count recess as instructional time and gotten all that trouble and had to redo our, our minutes. It's been two weeks and I haven't heard anything from anybody. And then the second thing was the cell phones. Again, I just wanted to clarify something I heard at your meetings that was said by staff regarding committee member makeup might have been a little misleading. At your May 10th meeting, you guys were told that you had two elementary principals, two middle school principals, and five high school principals on the committee. At your last meeting on June 14th, Ms. Healy asked if the committee included all principals and if it was a unanimous decision. And Mr. Nichols nodded, yes. Just wanted to clarify, it was only two. Also, during the course of the discussion, one board member said, quote, "We either trust our administrators or we don't." My first thought was, seriously? Just want to remind you all, you're in the money mess you're in and the PR mess you're in because you trusted some of your administrators and they were less than honest with you. You've lost control of the finance department. You've lost teachers. You've lost the respect of the board of supervisors because some of your administrators were less than honest with you. And then the last thing is, someone says, I'm not in the classroom, well, what do I know? And I can say the same for the administrators. They're not in the classroom either. The teachers are and they say no. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you make sure you sign in, please? Sorry.
I could have done it sooner, but we were not there.
That's right. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board at this time? Please come forward. All right. If not, moving on. We will move on to 9.01, Student Matters Discipline. I'm not sure there's a report. Is there?
We didn't have this, did we?
It looks like there's one.
Something about student A. Participate in graduation.
Yep, that's it.
You got it, Twain?
No.
Got me it?
It's too late. What happened?
Yeah, yeah. So we move on?
No, if you'll go ahead and announce it, we always have to announce it publicly.
On June 1st, 2016, a committee of the board met to consider one student disciplinary matter and the committee has permitted student A to participate in graduation exercises and practices.
Thank you very much. We will move on to board comments. I wanted to start with any committee reports that wanted to go in before we went into board member reports. I, I do admit, I think that it was good when we used to have them broken out, but Mr. Hyrens, I don't know if you would like to share on that or any other ones?
I'm Chair from the Finance Budget Committee. And I know you worked mostly on this document and it is a progress report of our 2016-2017 budget goals. We did set our goals for our budget and our fiscal year 2016 is about to expire tomorrow and 2017 begins. We're moving right into the future. And so our goals we set for our budget going into 2017 were provide market-based compensation systems for Stafford County Public School employees. We've made some good progress on this in our FY17 budget. We continue to enhance the compensation model for teachers to include our starting teacher salary is now $42,234, which is the highest in our region. It still lags behind all of our, not all of our, but some of our nine comparison counties that we'll continue to work on. We also discussed and started to make progress on paraprofessional bus driver and nurse compensation in the FY2017 budget. We increased the, those by, increased paraprofessional salaries by 50 cents per hour. The board recognizes that additional work in compensation models for all three of these employee groups should be developed, but we were unable to do it this budget cycle and it will remain a priority most likely going into FY18's budget development. And I apologize, Madam Chair, I'm kind of bouncing through the document, trying to get through it. We also had a budget goal of reduce classroom sizes. We did in the FY17 budget, adopt new staffing standards for the division and funded 29 positions for elementary education designed to reduce class sizes. We also added back four mass specialists to ensure every middle school has a full-time mass specialist, two additional high school English teachers, two CTTs, and two ESL specialists. In addition to the class size, we did an increase 43.5 special education positions that were primarily mandated by state and federal requirements. We also had a budget goal of create capital, cash, create a cash capital reserve fund for school capital projects, both the board supervisors and the school board passed resolutions to create the cash capital reserve and hopefully we'll get that funded to some extent. We had, again, in our compensation goals, we, we fulfilled the state mandate of the 5% VRS employee, employer contribution by adding an additional 1% salary increase. Our health and, health insurance program, we did engage with the county and now have a joint service program for our health service, health benefits, which is hopefully going to provide us some, not only savings, but also enhanced services. We also, under our enhancements, we increased, I'm sorry, we provided a 2% COLA for all Stafford County Public School employees and that was identical to what the county provided. We also increased professional development compensation for critical needs. We do recognize that we have additional work to do on that in 2018. We want to provide some of this in context of how we're doing, how, this new, new fiscal year that's about to kick off on July 1st, will look for Stafford County Public Schools. While we've all had some challenges and issues with financials over the last much-too-long period of time, I think the board has made significant progress with the FY2017 budget development and sets us on a good path, especially as we're implementing the new ERP financial system to have a better year this year and better data at the end of the year so we can begin to develop our 2018 and more importantly, a FY2019 budget with much better information will be in a much better budget development cycle in the coming years.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much for sharing that. I do think that it's important for us to realize, to track our progress. And so this was, before this Fab closes out, we thought this was time to bring this forward to show, you know, how, what our, what our progress report was.
And if I might add, if we could add this to our website under our budget development.
All right. Let's see.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, just a quick, I know we're going to, we have a full schedule tonight, so I'll be, I'll be quick. Congratulations to, on the completion of another wonderful school year. And special thanks to our retirees and employees who are departing Stafford County Public Schools for other endeavors. Thanks so much for your service. Mr. Hyrens gave a good briefing on the finances, you know, I think we hear a lot of bad news stories about the school system, but we're actually, we're actually doing pretty well. Test scores across the board are on the rise. Fully accredited schools and the kids are flourishing and that's, and that's the important thing. We do have some, some Ts to cross and some Is to dot in finances and hiring and strategic human capital development and things like that, so we don't have our salary lapses. But we're going to get on that and we are getting on that. Some new faces are coming on board with the leadership in our schools and that's, and that's, and that's good news. I think it's fresh, fresh set of eyes, fresh ideas and fresh competencies are always, always a plus.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Healy?
The follow-up on Mr. McCosker's comments, we cut our comments out at the last meeting so we didn't get a chance to congratulate all the graduates and their families and thank the staff for another wonderful year. We always make it through and I know the summer is very, very short and a lot of teachers are already getting ready for next year. And I expect, what, after the 4th of July, we can go to Walmart and see all those school supplies, you know, on sale, get the teacher list out, et cetera. But it's, it's an exciting time for Stafford County schools and I think we have a lot to look forward to with the new strategic plan, with the work that Dr. Benson's doing, with the, with the staffing and being able to really provide the support that is needed in the schools to go forward and, and do all the good work that is being done. You know, we all recognize and appreciate the teachers, but we also know that the teachers have the full support of, of the staff, whether it's the, the greeters out at the bus lines or the car riders or the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the parists, the nurses, you know, everybody that, that works together to provide that education. So I hope everyone has a restful summer and we'll see you very soon at the start of the next year.
Ms. Egan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually try to keep my comments brief so as to not to contribute to keeping everybody here later than you have to be, but I'm going to make an exception tonight because there's a couple of things that were brought to my attention towards the end of the school year. One in particular, we looked at, a couple of parents sent me some emails about a program in, in West Virginia that is, they refer to it as reverse suspensions. And they're piloting it out at Cabell County in West Virginia. And I emailed one of the school board members out there and she passed me off to her superintendent and he basically responded by saying that, you know, his, his entire district has to put, like everybody else, has to put together the develop and customize a positive behavioral interventions and support program at their schools. And what this one particular middle school had, has done is they've introduced this reverse suspension program. And basically for, for nonviolent and behaviors and things like that, they invite the parents in, the parents who can come in, take the day. How uncool is it to have your, your folks, you know, following you around to all your classes and sitting with you at lunch and things like that? And apparently, the school division has seen a marked improvement in classroom behaviors and reduction in, in out-of-school suspensions. So I'd be really interested, he sent me what he could and he was going to have one of his other principals get back to me, that the principal of the, this particular middle school where they're piloting it, and I mentioned it to Dr. Benson and I said I would mention it here tonight, that I'd, I'd really like us to take a look at doing something, kind of put another tool in that toolbox that we give to our principals for, for consequences and things like that. So if we could maybe take a look at that, that would be, that would be helpful. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about, I had a constituent come up last, at our last meeting. at our last meeting, and she was very upset, and I understand why she was upset. Her son, A student, got an A in Spanish, and he had bronchitis throughout the year, so he had two, two absences. Came back with a doctor's note, assumed it was an excused absence, but when he went to go take, when he took his SOL, he passed his SOL, but he still had to take the, I'm sorry, not the SOL, the, the exam. He had to take the exam because the two days out kicked the exemption out. So another schoolmate of his, a classmate, who had a B, who had one day out, apparently was able to be exempted from the exam. So I think we're, we're a little bit backwards on, on how that's working. Just seems odd to me that an A student, a kid, you know, a kid who aced his, the entire course, is made to take the exam when the B student didn't have to. So if we could maybe look at that and see if there's a fix for it, maybe we'll look at it and say that we don't do exemptions anymore anyway. I think somebody else also got up and spoke to that, saying that, you know, you've got your, your trades, that you have to go and get your electrician's exam, and you've got all these other things that you really need to know how to take an exam when you go out into the real world. So I just wanted to throw that out there as, you know, things we might want to look at as we go forward with, you know, fixing policy and things. So that's all I have for things.
Madam Chair, I'd like to volunteer Ms. Kidby to follow the students around during the.
Thank you.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
Ms. Kidby, I'll give you the opportunity to take the floor.
Mr. McCosker likes to volunteer people for various, various things. Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Actually, I would love to follow some students around, get me back in the, in the classrooms again, I would love that. Speaking of classrooms, I had an opportunity, and I wanted to share just, and add a little story with you this evening. I had an opportunity to talk with a young woman who happens to be a fine arts teacher at Dixon Smith Middle School. She didn't know I was a School Board member when she was talking to me, and I was talking to her in a very social situation, and she said that she was an art teacher, and I said, "Oh, I used to be a teacher too." So we started teacher talking. And she was telling me about some of the wonderful things that she was doing at Dixon Smith Middle School, and the theme of it, even though she didn't mean this to be the theme, is that she was going way above and beyond what her contract said. She was doing extra things, she was being there extra long, she was involved in things that she volunteered for, and at the end, I, I said to her, "You know, it's teachers like you that make Stafford County Public Schools such a wonderful place for our students to grow and to learn." And then I shared with her that I was on the Board. I'm not going to share her name because I didn't ask her permission to do that, but for all those wonderful teachers out there that are just like this wonderful art teacher at, at Dixon Smith Middle School, thank you for another great year.
Ms. Ayers?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to also echo the comments, congratulations to all of our graduates this year, to all of our retirees, to all of the people who've decided to move on. I also want to say thank you to those people who are here, who are still part of the team, the active team, and be ready for a great year. And change is upon us. It's a marathon, it's not a sprint, so I think if we all work together, pull together, we'll get this thing through. And I'm just excited, it may not look lighted, but this is my excited face. So, thank you.
What's your war face look like, Marines?
Mr. Hirons.
Just real quick, and I maybe end up stealing Mr. Lewis's thunder at a future meeting, but I was forwarded an email from his staff about some students from Stafford that participated in the Skills USA competition, the National Skills USA Competition, I believe was held last week. Emily Crescho placed first amongst 46 contestants in architectural drafting. I won't steal all of their names, I won't read the whole right up in case he presents them to us at some point, but I believe most of these students were in front of us a few weeks ago. Kevin Dreck was 10th place finalist of 43 contestants in technical drafting. Jennifer Sprowe and Nick Howson were first-ever competitors in, from Virginia, in a new competition, addictive, additive manufacturing 3D printing. Raul Sandoval represented Virginia in carpentry. And probably as important or as noteworthy, we all know the All-Star instructor there, Bobby Jett, he was presented with the Region Two Skills USA Advisor of the Year Award, representing the 12 southeastern states. So congratulate to all, congratulations to all those students and instructor, and hopefully we'll see them in front of us again in the future as they continue with their Skills USA program.
Just have a few comments, again, just to echo everybody's comments about graduation. I know we all enjoy sitting there and watching everybody walk across the stage, and I just know so many of you have a hand in, in getting some students across there. Some it's a push, some it's a pull, all of those things, and it's always a great day that day, even though you're stuck in traffic and stuff, getting around with the high schools. It's really such a celebration of our students and them moving on. And I wanted to also talk tonight about, we enjoyed, I really enjoyed my celebration at Rocky Run Elementary with my pen pal, Dr. Benson and Mrs. Cale, and Mrs. Neely did not bring their picture, but we all got our pictures drawn by our pen pals. So next time, you'll have to bring yours. And it's just a wonderful evening for us to be able to, I would like to say hello to Paola. We had such a wonderful year corresponding. It's so neat to be able to be involved in the school system in that way, and we had a celebration at the end of the school year. So thank you to Rocky Run and Mrs. Caswell's Little Critters class. Prior, before I close, I just wanted to confirm that we, the Board's support of a letter to the Board of Supervisors concerning the consolidation of financial services, just wanted to make sure that the Board was still in favor of sending that letter along. All right. Well, then next, I will turn over to Dr. Benson, but I do think he has a personnel announcement I hope he'll start us with.
I, I, I do.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jan Strike. If I could get Jan to stand up for us, that would be great. Dr. Strike is our new Executive Director of Learning and Organizational Development. She comes to us from Spotsylvania County Schools, where she's been Director of Growth and Innovation, and charged with providing instructional professional learning design and instructional leadership planning for the School Division. She has a Bachelor of Arts with a concentration in elementary education from Hood College, a Master's of Education, and a PhD from George Mason with specialization in educational leadership, curriculum design, and educational technology, and we're excited that you're going to be joining our team here in Stafford. Welcome.
Welcome aboard. Any other comments, Dr. Benson?
Well, just that, that marathon, not a sprint thing, really kind of resonates with me, both figuratively and literally. And then, you know, you raise the bar, so Natalie, if you're watching, my pen pal, just letting you know. Okay? Thanks.
Excellent. All right. Moving along to our consent items, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve consent?
Is there, is there a second? Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our action items, 12.01, approving the formation of a Governance School Board Standing Committee. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion about this particular agenda item? I will at least speak to it. I am happy that the Board is looking into this issue. It's been highlighted in our Evergreen Solutions, and I think it will help us even continue to function as a Board and move, work together. So I'm excited for us to move forward on this one. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Obviously, that item was on there before we got to 12.02, where we will be appointing members to our standing and advisory committees. I would like to just open right now, then we would have four standing committees, which would be Finance and Budget, Governance, Joint Schools, and Legislative. As we know, many times the Joint Schools is done in January, however, I think we, as a Board, have recognized that the work of our standing committees really begins, well, July 1 for the new year, and so it seems appropriate at this time to at least put our members on, on these committees and to, to move forward. I thought we would start with the standing committees. I guess I would like to open with, before we, let's see if we can do this by slate in some way. Our Joint Schools members are Ms. Healy, Mr. Hirons, and Mr. McCosker. Do you all, I believe, wish to stay on that committee and continue forward? Is that correct? Yep? Yes?
Yes, I'd be happy to stay on that committee unless someone else is really, really anxious to.
We would need an alternate for that committee. Is there someone who'd be willing to serve as an alternate on that? No?
I think I'm, I'm the.
Are you the current alternate?
I was, but, but I would, absolutely.
I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay. All right. Moving on to our, let's go to Governance next. I know I have expressed an interest in this committee, as has Ms. Kidby and Ms. Ayers. Is there anyone else who has a particular that would prefer to be on that committee, or would anyone interested in serving as the alternate on that committee?
I could do the alternate.
Okay.
Nobody else wants it?
As we all jump up and down. Moving on to Finance and Budget. As you all know, this is a committee with lots of things. I know that Mr. Hirons and myself have served the requisite number of years that if we were chosen to, if either of us were chosen, chosen to serve, we would have to have the Board agree to that. Ms. Kidby, I know you currently serve on that committee, and no matter how we go forward, I believe that there should be some kind of continuing presence on, on the Fab. Do you, I believe you would like to continue?
Yeah, I'm fine with continuing. I, I appreciate the, the Board allowing me the opportunity to, to work on not only finance, but, but also the governance. But because of the nature of my "I don't have a life" situation, it's a little bit easier for me to work on some of these committees than other people that have to head on down the road and work nine to five. I'm not in that, I'm not in that position in my life right now, so I'd be happy to serve on that.
You like being the grandparent.
I like being the grandparent, right.
Ms. Egan, I believe, did you express an interest as well on being on the Fab? Or, and I'll put you.
If you need a body in there, you can.
Ooh. And then, I know at one point, Ms. Healy, Mr. McCosker had expressed some interest. I know the three-on-three is another altern, I'm just trying to make sure everybody has adequate ability to serve on whichever committees. Is there any interest or even interest in serving as an alternate on this one? Because this one's, no?
I'll serve as an alternate. If no one else wants to be an alternate, I'll, I think I'm already the alternate.
Yep. You are the alternate. You would rather be an alternate based on the other commitments. Ms. Healy, same as the?
Well, I don't, I don't want to be a committee hog.
Committee hog.
We meet a lot.
I do have a day job.
That's right. I, I understand.
Which I try to get to occasionally.
Yes, I understand. So if we want, there's still one remaining. And Ms. Ayers, I don't know, would, would you be interested in, in serving on that, on that committee, or would you prefer to wait? I know you've been coming to the committee meetings with things to understand, it's up to you all.
I'm good with serving on the committee. I just don't want to drag it down. So I'm good with serving on the committee, so if there does need to be a body, consider me a body as well.
Well, or we can also do alternate, this is a committee that I invite all of the Board to attend if, if they so choose. Mr. Hirons, do you have any interest in remaining? Just making sure.
No, I'm fine with giving it other opportunity. Like, like Ms. Healy, I don't want to be a committee hog, and I feel like I, I'm doing my damage on three-on-three, so to speak.
So to speak. Okay. All right. I will put Ms. Ayers as a additional member of, of the committee. Legislative, is there interest in legislative committee?
I'm on it now. We tried to get it off the ground, but unforeseen circumstances occurred, so it never actually got off the ground. Because I'm going to do the Fab now, I don't think that I'm going to have the time to do Legislative as well, so.
What would we like to do then?
You're going to need a slate.
Would we, I believe we should keep this committee, though, going, and then it can be up to the members how active they would like to be. Are there any volunteers for this committee?
I would be happy to volunteer for this committee.
I would also be willing to serve on that one, so that, now, that one has two members, but if, is there interest?
Did we, did you change it to?
Did we change it to three?
I think, I think we did, but I'm okay if we're bound out. I think I'm on that one.
You are?
If we're bound out on that one.
I think we said that even if we had two members, we were still going to advertise in meetings. That was the issue on that. It wasn't, you know.
Okay. Is there, is there anyone who would like to serve as an alternate, then, on that one?
I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay. All right. All right. Before we move on to advisory committees, does the, is it the will of the Board to go ahead and vote the slate as we just proposed it?
Sure.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to read them off. For the Fab Committee, Ms. Kidby, Ms. Egan, Ms. Ayers, alternate, Mr. McCosker. Governance, Ms. Hazard, Ms. Kidby, Ms. Ayers, alternate, Ms. Egan. Joint Schools will remain, Ms. Healy, Mr. Hirons, Mr. McCosker, with an alternate of Ms. Ayers. Our Legislative, Mr. Hirons and Ms. Hazard, with the alternate of Ms. Ayers. Are there any changes? All right.
Just one question, Madam Chair. On our table, the Head Start Policy Council is under the title of standing committees, and did we, did we fill that with Ms. Collins' departure?
Yes, I've been attending, I've been attending the Head Start committees.
Are you our official person?
Yes, I am. And I will continue with that.
Madam Chair, isn't public day school also a standing committee?
It's not a standing committee. It was a ad hoc.
Yeah, that one's under our advisory committees.
Is it?
I don't think we.
The one all the way at the top without a title.
Yeah, I'm, as it stands now, I'm, yeah, that's you, it. You're it. I'm it.
Unless you wanted to.
No, I'm fine.
All right. Would there be a motion to, to accept the slate for the standing committees?
Move to accept.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have created our standing committees. Okay, get to work, July 1. Advisory committees, are there, I know that there is a vacancy on Fine and Performing Arts, which I do know Ms. Ayers had asked for, if she could take that one. Are there any changes? People want to swap, want something new? Please let me know. I know we've talked a little bit among, hold on, let me get my list.
I'd like to stay on CIP. We're, we're kind of in the process of, with, with the committee talking about the, the, it's late.
Schools?
No. Yeah, that. Ewalt property, thank you. It was right on the tip of my tongue, just wouldn't come out.
Mr. McCosker, do you want to continue to be the alternate there, or?
Unless someone, unless someone else wants to be the alternate on CIP. I don't, I don't hear a lot of takers.
All right. CTE, currently I am the lead on that committee. Is there anybody who would prefer to take that one? All right, we'll keep that. Mr. Hirons, you are currently the alternate, is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds great.
Fine and Performing Arts, Ms. Egan, I wouldn't mind serving as the alternate on that committee unless you really want.
On what?
Fine and Performing Arts. Fine and Performing Arts.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay. All right. Gifted, right now, Mr. McCosker with Ms. Healy, alternate. Any changes? People, anybody gunning to?
Unless someone, unless someone wants gifted, I'll continue on gifted.
Do you get free gifts?
Bring us some.
No free gifts.
Ms. Healy, you okay as the alternate?
Sure, if nobody else wants it.
All right. School Health, Ms. Healy, I know that's a special interest, but.
I know, and we need to let that new, new person know that Mr. Sly used to bring those healthy snacks to the school health meetings, which was a real highlight.
So you make sure that that's passed along?
So that's when I want to be on.
Yes. Is there anyone who would like to serve as the alternate there? Anyone? I mean, I'm happy to continue, if, either way. Special Education, Ms. Kidby, would you like to continue?
Yes, and I really hope that I can get to some meetings this year. I think I've got to two. They're on Tuesday evenings.
They're on Tuesdays.
And if we have a special told meeting, or if we have a work session, then it precludes me from being able to go. So, I'm going to work real hard this time. Could you change it to like Wednesdays or something?
Is there an alternate? Ms. Healy, you currently are, is there someone else?
Unless somebody else wants it, I'm buying if somebody else wants to be the alternate.
All right, I'll keep there. And finally, Technology, is Mr. Hirons, would you?
I'm happy there.
All right, and.
I'll make the meetings eventually. I keep getting scheduled when we have meetings, it seems.
And do we have an alternate there for Technology? Is yours? Excellent. All right. We have not made many changes. Is everybody comfortable with the changes? Would you like me to reread them, or are you okay?
Do we have one additional vacancy, the Parks and Rec Commission? And do we know that the new member, or does new member know that that's required service?
I think Ms. Ayers would do a wonderful job on Parks and Rec.
You get to learn a lot about Parks and Rec in Stafford County.
I'm very interested in Parks and Recreation.
Outstanding. Good answer. Good answer. No, you don't get to vote, you get, well.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah. Now, wait till the slate gets voted.
So you weren't going to read them, right?
No, I was.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Now we'll tell you what that really means. No. 12.03, approved superintendent's proposed key strategies developed for the new strategic planning framework.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Dr. Benson?
We're chugging along on track to meet our August launch.
This is the last part that we need the board to approve, and then we'll work on packaging it all up. We already have the general framework for the publication and posters and electronic distribution. And then staff will be working on the action plans to support the key strategies. And we will be utilizing an online tool to track our progress in impacting positively those metrics that the board has previously adopted. So, we're in good shape, and we'll be ready to roll out in August, provided the board adopts strategies.
Give us a moment. All right. Since there doesn't appear to be any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 12.04, approve the potential use of FY 2016 estimated year-end funds for various needs. I will turn this over to Dr. Benson and Mr. Fulmer, I believe.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fulmer pretty quickly here. But as we have previously communicated with the board, the closer we get to the end of the fiscal year, the more accurate we are with available resources that the board might choose to do something with. And what we've tried to do this spring is to make sure that our board elected officials have the opportunity to determine where any resources might, might go. And so we've got some additional considerations for the board this afternoon, as well as an update on potential savings that may remain at the close of this current fiscal year. Mr. Fulmer.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. You should have attached your agenda item, a summary which should look familiar, because we reviewed it at our last meeting. The numbers have been updated to reflect as they stand as of yesterday. To kind of work our way down, we have additional kind of projected non-payroll and benefit savings. As of right now, 2.25. Our projected payroll savings and benefits of 1.5. I currently have in there a projected shortfall in revenue. That may not be true. It's one of those items until we can get into all of our accruals, really, how they flush out. We know our state money is fine. They very clearly lay out to us what you're getting. The other ones, there's a few up in the air, and fees collected from schools. We know of a revenue item that we're definitely not getting because of a change in our impact aid numbers for number of military students. Unfortunately, it wasn't all or nothing. So that's several hundred thousand dollars. So, I've dropped it in there. That may not come to fruition. We may end up capturing all of our revenues, but being a little bit on the conservative side there. Total projected available savings of roughly 3.2 million. And as you remember, in our required uses, we have a carryover for 1.25 to fund the 2018, or sorry, 2017 fiscal year. And once again, we have two sections. One, of potential uses that are currently in our FY 17 budget, and then a section of potential uses that are not in our fiscal year 17 budget. We already approved at the, or sorry, you guys already approved at the June 14 meeting, roughly $2 million of FY 17 expenditures for us to pre-purchase. So, these potential uses of the FY 17 budget items of 1.3 would be on top of that 2 million. The numbers that are not in the FY 17 budget are items that staff and Dr. Benson feel strongly about. And then some other considerations, but we have not currently put any money in those slots. As you can see, the remaining, if we funded all of these, would not have enough. And I don't think we want to spend every dollar available. But the purpose of this exercise is to bring you all the options, have you guys give us guidance on how you want us to proceed. As we finalize the numbers here in the next few days, we'll execute what we can and encumber those funds and start those projects to where we feel comfortable, up to a certain dollar limit.
Yes, Ms. Egan.
So much time has gone by since we initially had a conversation about the $2 million that was supposed to get allocated to the Moncur rebuild. I'm completely lost. I have no, I have no idea where we're at with it.
That was in 8.3, you mean. Is that what you're talking about?
I don't know. I thought that the, I thought the board supervisors said, said, "We're going to give you the $2 million towards the Moncur." Then it wasn't going to happen. I don't know where we're at with it. So I guess I, I'm looking for information that I can pass on to my constituents, that they know what the future of their rebuild is going to be.
Ms. Egan, I don't believe that supervisors have taken action regarding those savings that were turned back to them at the end of that fiscal year. The action that they did take previously was to adopt a CIP that included $2 million in cash from savings at the end of the year. And I know that there has been conversation about whether or not they will continue to support that or not, but I don't believe that there has been any action on their part to do anything different with the way the CIP is currently funded, or planned to be funded. We are going to have some dialogue later this evening about Moncur and projected cost increases, and what it would take for us to build the school with the elementary design specs that were approved by the board, as well as, there's a differential there based upon what our architects are recommending with hallway space that I think we need to have some conversation about before we attempt to move forward there. So I don't have a definitive, "I'm sure we're going to get it," or "I'm sure we're not going to get it." But, you know, the board supervisors did adopt a CIP that included $2 million in cash for Moncur.
So, my last question, was there anything that came out of the three-on-three committee that addressed that? Was, is there any action that we have to take, other than having the conversation? I'd like to.
Well, the requirement of us passing or adopting a resolution related to a joint CAFR, joint audit, still remains a caveat or a requirement for that money to be released according to the resolution that the board adopted.
Okay.
You know, as I do, the conversation has continued to add items or requirements, possibly us participating in discussions on shared services for Financial Department. But as Dr. Benson said, you know, they adopted a CIP that has that $2 million cash included in it. So they're going to have to do something with their CIP if they do not push that money towards, towards that.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I can tell you, as regards to the, to the joint CAFR, I, about a month ago, in a lunch that we had with the, with the chair and the vice chair, asked specifically for an audience with the auditor, so I could ask specific questions about, "What are the upsides to this? What are the downsides to this? Tell me, what is, what is it that you're looking to do with a joint CAFR?" I was assured that I would, I would, by Mr. Romanello, that they would get me an audience with Mr. Cannon. And I've not heard anything from them. So if, you know, we're waiting on them to do something, they're waiting on us to do something, we're at a stalemate here. So, something needs to get done, and it needs to get done soon. The school needs to be built. So, looking forward to our conversation later on.
And I think, too, that there needs to be a clearer definition of what they're identifying as joint CAFR. From my perspective, for all intents and purposes, we already have a joint CAFR. Our financials are dropped into theirs at the end of the year. They're, the CAFR is presented with our financials, their CAFR is presented with our financials in it. So I'm not quite sure, it still hasn't been made clear to me what it is they're really looking for, and I'm not sure that they.
Ms. Kidby, I attended their last Fab meeting a week or two ago, and there, I believe she's Director of Finance, Maria?
She's Chief Financial Officer.
Chief Financial Officer, gave the best description I had heard of what they're seeking and looking for. They're essentially looking for a, a single engagement letter, but enabling the school board to have additional requests, if we should have a additional request. And I had a conversation with the chairman of the board after, after that meeting, and expressed to him what would be awful helpful is for he or the board to put in writing that language of what exactly they are looking for, and send it to us. So, it's well communicated, because it has been discussed in chair, vice chair meetings, which there are not minutes of. It's been discussed in their Fab meeting, which there are not minutes of. It's been discussed at their board meeting. It's been discussed amongst us. It's been discussed in our Fab meeting. And it's always little nuances, differences. So I asked the chairman of the board supervisors to put in writing what exactly it is, and find detail of what, what it is they're looking for. In my personal opinion, in that description of what they were saying, I think we could probably comfortably move forward, and we'd discuss that in the Fab and bring a recommendation to this board.
We just have to make sure, and again, in my perspective, that if we have a single engagement letter, that, that it's clear that that doesn't, this board has a fiscal responsibility for the financials of Stafford County Public Schools that is entrusted to us by the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's important that this board continue to take upon that responsibility and not pass that responsibility over to someone else. So it's incumbent upon us to make sure that if we have a single engagement, that we are not in any way jeopardizing or relinquishing that responsibility to another board. We cannot by law do that. We don't have the authority to do that.
And I express that directly to the board chair, who's only one member over there. And that's why I'm hoping we get something in writing, so we can know, black and white, what it is exactly they're looking for, and stop having these, these random conversations that are picked up in minutes, aren't picked up in minutes.
Ms. Healy.
Madam Chairman, years ago, when the county had requested that we do the joint audit, and we came to a mutually agreeable resolution, which was, we had the same auditor, but then we had two separate engagement letters. If, in fact, they're looking for something different, I would suggest that we have our legal counsel review, you know, any proposed engagement letters, to make sure that we are not relinquishing any of our responsibilities, and that we will have the autonomy that we need as a school board to be responsive to the auditors and the whole audit process. I don't think there's been any issue at all since we started working with the, with the supervisors. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer? I mean, we, you know, we worked fine with the county. It's, it's worked well. So I would be curious as to why they want to change, you know, the current arrangement, where we, we share an auditor, we, it goes out under the RFP. The only difference is there's separate engagement letters, or if there's some benefit that is perceived from this potential change.
What was described in their Fab meeting, the reason they, one of the primary reasons they want to push for this, drive for this, is their chief financial officer stated that we're always, they are always waiting on the school's information, the school audit, to be able to drop into their audit. And they have been late on their audit to their, you know, the state office that audits go to several times because of the lateness of the school information. Whether or not, you know, there's truth to that, I don't know. We haven't investigated that or looked at that. But that's something I think we probably discuss, or would be smart to discuss within the Fab, to get to the bottom of that, if that's true, if that's a valid reason.
In line with.
There's most certainly not a lot of cost savings.
Right. In line with Ms. Healy's comments, I know when we have attended our Virginia School Board Associations, and if everybody's gone to the lady from Loudoun, I can't, I can't think of her name. She always gives one, gives us the talk.
From Loudoun County. She's a sample from Loudoun.
And they've taught, it has come up there, and many times the advice there was to make sure that you had the appropriate protections, if, no matter, that it is possible. So, I certainly agree with Ms. Healy's comments.
No, no, I was going to go on to this. So, if you have a comment on this area. Yeah, thank you for the, no, that was good discussion, because I'm glad we're kind of getting down to, you know, we need to work with the board of supervisors. We need to work with our funding body. Last I heard, we had a meeting, it was chair to chair, and there was only a few things that were not taken care of in that meeting, and I thought we were working towards that. But I guess it kind of, from that, from that report that I received a couple of weeks ago, it kind of went astray. So, are we indeed going, so what is the formal process to get to a joint CAFR with, I mean, what are we going to do? Or is the chairman going to send a letter over?
Sent two.
Sent two letters already, about what, and we, have we gotten a response to that, those letters?
No, we haven't. And again, my last, and you know, it is in the capacity of chairman of our Finance and Budget Committee, was discussion with their board chairman. Again, one member, and he was going to make a request to the full board. I didn't receive any report from him as to whether or not, A, he presented it, or B, they gave it him any response on whether or not they were going to do that. So in my opinion, it is in their court to define what it is exactly, what you're looking for in writing, because all of this discussion just obviously is not working. It has to come from them in writing of what it is in details of what they're looking for in terms of the joint CAFR, joint audit.
So maybe, Mr. Fulmer, you can go out and talk to Ms. Perot and say, "Hey."
No, I think, I think that's at a board level.
It is, it is requirement, or is in the board supervisor's court at this point, too.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I know the official request is in the board supervisor's court. court. You know, if we don't get an answer, then, I guess, then what? Then what do we do, if nothing, right?
I'm sure the new FAB will have some recommendations.
Yeah, the new FAB will have some, okay. So, back to the document at hand, under the Agenda item, projected non-payroll savings. So, I understand that, you know, once again, this was briefed last week and a week prior, but the fleet charges, fuel, utilities, that was all due to, you know, management, and the savings there was due to good management, good energy, as we win awards for that, is that true?
Correct. Energy costs are down, fuel costs are down.
Gas prices, okay, and that is a substantial amount of $2,250,000. Projected payroll savings, is that a salary lapse? So, where does that come from?
It would be a combination of salary lapse, benefits, et cetera, throughout the year.
From, throughout the year, okay. And then revenue shortfall, I understand that, $500,000. So, I guess, you know, where I sit, and I've, you know, the salary lapse piece, I know, I hope we are working on, and I know Dr. Benson and you, Mr. Fulmer, are working towards us to get, to kind of cut the salary lapse piece down. Institutions, you know, have folks come, and they have folks go. And we need to do a better job with the strategic human capital management, and making sure we're hiring these folks before the end of the year. And I don't think we're doing that well, and I think the Supervisors are kind of have an eye on that, to, when we have a $5 million salary lapse, that means that we haven't done a bad job in strategic human capital management of the folks on our workforce. We should know that, you know, 200 teachers leave, and 100 maintenance personnel, and we need to rehire that within the year, or very close to when the new year starts, so we can actually hire people into the job, and we don't have one-time money when July 1 comes around with the salary lapse. So, that is the thing about this payroll, this $1.5 million payroll, where we're coming up to the back where we can't hire folks on this payroll money, is that correct, that we have saved?
Correct.
Because come 1 July, it turns into one-time money, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, that is kind of the, I understand the fleet charges and the utilities, and the good management practices that the senior folks have been doing to get that couple of million-dollar savings, and that's the money that should go to buying more computers, or surging to where we need it in the school division. But, the payroll money is the tricky part. The payroll money is, we need to keep the teachers and the employees with that payroll money. And so, we must do a better job of that for FY '17, and I know Dr. Benson has it on his shortlist, that we're going to really make sure that we get these people on board, because that's kind of, that's where it's hurting us. It's hurting us, it's, you know, saving a couple of million dollars every year in payroll is not a good thing for any business, unless you want to cut back, and cut back means raising class sizes and reducing services, and we don't want that. I think we've been heading, as many folks on this Board said, in the right direction for that, so, okay, thank you.
All right, I just wanted to make one comment before we start to talk about the, I just wanted to bring the Board's attention to the Impact Aid question. Dr. Benson explained it to me, I don't know if you'd be willing to just give that short overview of what the changes were to Impact Aid, and why our numbers have dropped, probably.
So, we had a pretty significant reduction in the percentage of our overall student population that qualified for Impact Aid associated with military service, and it was actually, and I might get the years wrong, because it might have been as many as three years ago, but we were at about 23%, and dropped down to about 20% because of a change that would not allow us to count students of parents who leave the Commonwealth to work at, for example, the Navy Base in Maryland. So, we hovered right at about 20%, and this year, we dipped down below 20%, and it is an all-or-nothing deal with that additional revenue, and the revenue is approximately-
$425,000 is what was budgeted for FY '16.
So, we're doing an analysis of where the drops were, to see if that's something that we might be able to recover from, but it is a, it's either you hit it or you don't. So, there's, it's not like the class size reduction monies, that there are degrees of funds that are available to you based upon how small you make your classes.
I just wanted the Board to understand that, because I was shocked that they did not fund for parents and guardians who drive to DC for-
I would also like to note for the Board, if I get this right, Mr. Fulmer, that there are only four school divisions in Virginia that have been receiving this Impact Aid, and three of them are in the Tidewater area. We are the only ones in Northern Virginia, correct?
That's correct. And to be clear, the DOE has Impact Aid money, which is roughly a million dollars that we receive, and then the DOD, based on numbers that the DOE sends them, has additional funding. That's the piece that we're missing, is the DOE, and that's where it's a flat 19.5%, we have to stay over. And this year, we were probably 90 students short, 90 military students short, admitting that 19.5%. And I, for full disclosure, and I haven't shared this with Dr. Benson yet, but we've been doing the research.
Hell.
Yeah. So, a quick warning, but-
Never surprise your boss.
Yeah, there were areas pointed out, we have a federal review, it was completely random, every 10 years, it's the first one in 10 years, they didn't point us out, they didn't go out looking for us, it's completely random, and they came in, and I took applications and basically threw them out because of where they were located. Maybe it wasn't a complete address, like it said, they worked at the Pentagon, but it really needed to be Suite A, you know, et cetera, at the Pentagon, you had to have a full mailing address. And we went back and tried to get that information, it was too late, we had military bases that were going to provide that information, they didn't. So, that right there, we're just going to make a conscious effort ahead of the schedule, and devote some additional staff to make sure. Now, we've got applications for the items that popped up in the review.
Well, I appreciate that, I just thought that that was important for the Board to understand.
And Madam Chair, just quickly, the grant, the whole grant process, there are so many, I mean, I get so confused with the school grant, and the work that needs to be done to stay on top of these grants, you know, we really do need some personnel assigned, you know, FTEs, and I know we have a few, but we really need to take a good look at that, because, you know, the salary that we pay a few folks to keep on top of the grant process, you know, if they're doing it well, it would really, I mean, pay for themselves. A lot of folks do that, they say, here's my three grant personnel FTEs, you know, people, and if they don't come in with grants that pay for their salaries, well, they're gone. And so, you know, we just need to keep a, as a Board-
We may be on a-
Yes.
We will be helping to fund those, so.
Madam Chair, one quick question, just a point of clarification, is this something that the parents have to declare, like, this is a survey, those bright orange forms that were sent home?
They go out at the beginning of every school year to every parent.
Right, right, I think mine turned orange, because I didn't turn it in, I think. So, this is something that the families have to provide?
Correct.
So, it may be the fact that we just did not get that information back, or is it-
That is the biggest challenge every year, is getting those-
Okay, okay.
Forms returned. I truly believe our numbers didn't drop, it's some of the bases and numbers being excluded, and the applications that were incomplete, or incomplete addresses, I should say, and then just getting those forms back from the parents, and it's not from a lack of effort.
No.
Madam Chair, on that note, can we kind of suggest to the superintend, I suggest to our new Director of Communications, some strategic communication plan on this specific effort? I think if we can demonstrate the money that was lost, probably because the folks that didn't return forms-
I didn't do it, it was just ready to ask.
And the importance of the accuracy of the information. I think that would be probably fairly useful at the beginning of next year, school year, for low cost, to make sure that gets funded.
All right, well, now that we've, oh, go ahead, Ms. Kibbe.
Real quick, in defense of our educators, since I've been in that boat, our teachers do a dang good job of staying on top of this, they really do, they work real hard, but there's always a few that don't come in. But, I got to give it to our teachers, they really work hard at getting those in.
That's why I got that orange one.
Right, so, I know that that diverted us, but we now have a new assignment for somebody
else. So, moving along, we have as potential uses, let's begin to, yes, Ms. Healy.
The required use, the carryover capital reserve, the $1.25 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that money that has to be re-appropriated? Because if it is, we may not be able to count on it.
That's correct.
Okay, so it is. So, it seems that it would behoove us to pre-spend expenses already approved in the '17 budget, in the event we don't get this back, because we're going to have to come up with the $1.25, just to fund our budget, correct? I don't think we can count on anything at this point, it's not our money after the end of the year, it's like Cinderella with the-
So, we are asking the Board to consider some additional purchases that are budgeted in the FY '17 budget.
Right, I see that below, but these potential uses not in the FY '17 budget, is there nothing else in the '17 budget that we could not fund, pre-fund? And the reason I ask that is because I would be on the more conservative side, and want to spend the money on items that we've already approved, that we said we need, we're going to, you know, we're going to do them anyway, and that way, there cannot be a, for lack of a better word, accusation that we are just spending this money at the end of the year. If we are pre-spending on items that, you know, will be purchased, you know, sometime would have been purchased after July 1, if we purchased them before July 1, it seems that we're putting ourselves in a better position next year to decide where those funds are needed. So, is there anything else that was considered, or that could be pre-purchased for '17, from the '17 budget? Because these potential uses, I mean, $768,360 is a lot of money to use for something that wasn't in the budget. We cut a lot of things out of that budget, you know, already, I'm assuming these may have been some of the things in there, but before I even consider anything not in the '17 budget, I want to know that there's nothing else that we can purchase from the '17 budget, you know, with these funds.
May I respond to that?
Sorry it was so long.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Ms. Kibbe.
One thing that we need to keep in mind, as we look at our budget, is that between 85% and 87% is personnel?
Yes, ma'am.
In that somewhere. So, we're talking about a $270 million budget, and we've got $220,000, $225 million, that's going toward re-accruing expenses. So, to be able to pre-purchase items, then with what's left, $40, $50 million, you have to look at items that are more like capital items, items that you can hold in your hand, they're not disposable items, they're not like supplies and those kinds of things. And it's sometimes difficult within our budget, not impossible, I'm not suggesting, but difficult.
I'm just raising the question, is it something they looked at, and they can say, there is nothing else we can pre-buy with next year's money? I'm, you know, that's my question.
Sure.
And I understand where you're coming from, because you're right.
Yeah, it's difficult.
But it's interesting, because hypothetically, if we pre-purchase this year's prepaid expenses, there really wouldn't be anything to stop us from bringing on some extra teachers or staff for one-year contracts, that wouldn't be, you know, if we found ourselves in a bind, like we have before, you know, like last year, when we went and we approved all these teachers at the beginning of the year, and then we had to scurry around trying to find, you know, people that could come in, in the last couple of weeks before school started. Not suggesting we're going to do that, but again, I am reluctant to approve almost $800,000 in unplanned expenses, you know, right now, in the last three days or so of the year. But, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Kibbe, and I agree, but, you know, I don't, I'm assuming that there is an answer, or-
Sure, well, the-
Yeah, let me start, and then Chris can follow up. And we did try to look at things that we could purchase and potentially have in hand, or the means to execute in relatively short order, as opposed to something that, you know, might not get taken care of for months, so that was part of the consideration. There were some other items, Mr. Fulmer, that we had discussed, if the Board is interested in going beyond this, even though we're projecting this potential savings, what we're asking the Board to consider this evening is really only a $2 million expenditure, just because we don't want to cut it too close, and we've got bills to pay. So, Mr. Fulmer, anything to add to that?
Sure, I just want to point out that at the June 14 meeting, all the expenditures, which were $2,320,000, were all FY '17 expenditures. So, we've already pre-purchased those, and then to remind you, that was partially to cover the $1.1 million in the salary scale adjustment for FY '17. In addition, if we prepay enough to cover the $1.25 in the carryover, that may or may not get re-appropriated by the school board, or by the Supervisors, excuse me. And then, further along in the Agenda, there's another item that hopefully if we prepay, we'll be able to fund those tonight as well, with your approval. So, we tried to identify as many items as we could that are out of FY '17. Like Dr. Benson said, there are limits there to what you can, you know, encumber before the end of the year, and reasonably fulfill in a reasonable amount of time early in the year. We don't like to carry over purchase orders for 11, 12 months without completing them. So, the idea is we appropriate them before the end of the year, or sorry, encumber them before the end of the year, and try to execute them shortly, or right away, but then we would spend the money shortly after, into the new fiscal year.
I have a quick question about the carryover.
I didn't hear my answer, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just, so, is my answer, no, there is nothing else we can do?
No, I think there's likely some additional items that we could identify.
Okay.
If I could direct the Board's attention to the year-end requests, and just so that you understand the rationale for these items, one of the things that I've asked Mr. Fulmer to do is to go in and look at how the budget was developed for FY '17, and trying to do a little kind of checks and balances for things that are supposed to be there, or making sure that things are kind of critical to our operations moving forward are there. There are two items on this list that we're not. One of them is the College Board PSAT fees, that's part of our strategy to increase student access to SAT, but also to the AP participation, help us figure out which, what kids would be good candidates for taking more advanced level, more rigorous coursework. And the other is the annual licensing fee for Munis. We have a contract with Munis that is leased a purchase for the product, but most software applications have an annual licensing fee that runs 10% to 15% of the cost of the product. This number was not included in the budget, and it's, in the contract, it stated that it should be, and it's a separate fee, and so-
Separate from the contract.
Separate from the contract, Mr. Fulmer found it, should have been in there.
That's scary.
Can I go back to my question real quick?
You can, you can identify, then, that as something that we probably should pay for, because it's something we're going to have to pay in 2017 anyway.
I don't have a problem with that list. My concern is with the potential uses not in the FY '17 budget totaling $600, no, $768,360. That is the only issue I'm raising at this point.
And those are the ones Dr. Benson just identified.
No, is that what you're talking about?
I did two of them, I did two bottom ones. The other is that-
So, you're saying they should have been in the budget, but they weren't?
The bottom two should have been, okay? The top two are things that we have discussed, but we have not taken any action on. One was how we were going to pay for the North Stafford High School library design, so that would be a means for us to take care of that now. And the other is about relocating those modulators from Colonial Forge to AG Wright Middle School, and to Head Start.
Dr. Benson, can I ask you a question about this, this line item for capital reserve? Do we have any, are there any mandates placed on that, that we have to keep a minimum amount in every year? Wasn't that established through, wasn't that a requirement of the Board of Supervisors?
The capital reserve is part of our, the resolution that both the Supervisors and, separate resolutions, but Supervisors passed one that allow us to do it. School Board did one saying that we support it. We had originally suggested that $3.5 million go into that, which we got a recommendation- We had originally suggested that $3.5 million go into that, which we got a recommendation back from our colleagues across the street that suggested 1.5 would be sufficient, and the other two could go into the Moncur rebuild.
Okay. So, there's no requirements for us to leave any amount of money in there for, at the end of a budget cycle?
There is not. You know, at some point in the future, and I've expressed this opinion before to the board, I'd like us to get to be able to have some kind of an agreement that says up to a certain percentage that that money would automatically get re-appropriated to the school board, and anything above that percentage in terms of savings in a given fiscal year would be allocated to capital projects. We're not there. Certainly, if we had any savings at this current year, and we'll have some, because we're not going to spend down to, you know, you don't want to cut it too close. So, there will be some. And, you know, that's the perfect place for those resources to go, to help offset capital costs. I understand the board's hesitation and concern about if we budgeted forward $1.25 million in projected savings that we would anticipate to be re-appropriated, and the board supervisors chose not to do that, that would put us in a difficult situation. Hence, Mrs. Healy's asking about whether or not there are additional FY '17 expenditures that we could consider.
Well, I'm a little concerned about hearing now, not a little, I'm more than a little concerned about hearing now that there are expenses that we missed putting into the budget. I mean, that concerns me.
It concerns me as well.
But if that's the case, and they're mandatory expenses, and we would have incurred them, I can support it. What I'm concerned about is just saying, "Well, we're just going to spend this money," because, you know, it's not our money to just go out and spend. You know, we need to just spend it on things that, you know, have been identified. So, that's...
No, I understand, Ms. Healy, I do. And so, the top two items, you know, the board has expressed a desire to move forward with a North Stafford High School library redesign. That, we have not budgeted the money to do that at this point. We were looking to try and do it with savings. We also know that there's going to be a future expense associated with that, because we had talked about doing the redesign or the construction with cash as opposed to borrowing. And then, the relocation of the modulars is a relatively new issue for us, and it's...
I haven't heard anything about AG Wright. It's in my district. So, you know, this, if this is something that's been in the works, and, you know, I don't remember during our budget discussions, did I?
It was post-budget discussion. We had conversation about...
So, it's post-budget discussion.
It was about space needs at AG Wright and some challenges with staffing or space for the course room.
Ms. Hazard, are you aware of that?
No, I can speak to the Head Start one, because I was on policy council when this came up.
While you're on that topic, can we get some description of what $304,000 pays for, for modular relocation? Does that include utility connections and everything and annual costs or something? The $304,000 just sounds like a lot of money, move trailers.
Yes, it includes fire alarm connection, utility connection. It includes foundation. In Stafford County, they require us to do a pretty extensive foundation plan for modulars, where some other counties don't require as extensive. So, there's significant cost in there. We provided in one of the updates, and I don't know the specific date, but the issue surrounding the deficit in the core room. We discovered it when the fine arts program brought it to our attention, that we went and investigated it. They're in a small room off of the, one of the CTE labs. And so, post-budget, we started devising potential plans that we could try and alleviate that. We could certainly continue to operate status quo there at AG Wright as well as Head Start. Head Start would require some smaller level of effort in the existing facilities that we'd have to do. We could probably do it with our own supply dollars and what have you. So, but we thought of a plan other than just parking the trailers in a lot there at Gary Melcher's to make them operational, when these two requirements started to percolate up. And so, that was the proposal. We obtained a cost proposal from our job order contractor, and so it includes many of the things I just mentioned to you in that.
Mr. Haran, how many modules are we talking about?
We have, we only own three, and that was part of, that we purchased. So, they're actually, one's a double. It's a larger modular.
$100,000 apiece? How much does a new modular cost?
Well, can't tell you right off the top of my head, but at the time, when we were looking at the modulars to support Colonial Forge, we knew that the lease cost actually was more expensive than the, than purchasing them. So, we ended up purchasing them.
You purchased them.
So, yes, ma'am.
So, we own them.
Yes, ma'am. We own those three. And nothing says we can't leave them in place. At Colonial Forge, we just will disconnect them from the fire alarm system. If you recall, we funded a fire alarm retrofit at Colonial Forge, and part of that was excluding those trailers. We didn't include those for the future. So, we can certainly leave them in place. There's no cost if we decide to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haran.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Benson, is there a dollar amount that you feel comfortable recommending to the board tonight? I know there's still closeout items. I think we, I mean, I see what the large figures are, but we don't want to spend down to the penny. What would be the recommendation?
We do not. And what our recommendation is this evening is that we consider these two lists of items. If the board, you know, has some reservation about the year-end spending, there are some things in there that we have, we'll have to find a way to fund them next year, including that, the Munis annual support and that, the PSAT. The combination of the two lists, though, get us to about, totals about $2 million.
Dr. Benson, the Munis support, that's for the financial system.
It's an annual licensing fee. As I said...
We want to pay that.
Yeah, I think that's important to have.
I don't have a problem with that. My problem was that it wasn't in the budget, that it's now being presented as an expenditure that was not pre-planned for next year.
Yes, ma'am.
And it would have been like an emergency expenditure. So, if we're going to have to do it anyway, I don't have a problem. I don't have, the PSATs, we're going to have to pay them. North Stafford, you know, we approved that, you know. And just, I'm just concerned about $300,000 to relocate, you know, some modulars.
Then I would ask the board to, you know, to consider the other three items, along with the FY '17 purchases.
Dr. Benson, you talked about having two lists. Can you, I'm sorry, I must have...
Yes. One of the lists says year-end, there are four items on it.
Right.
And then, there's an FY, there's one that has FY '17.
Right.
Do you see this one?
No, I've seen them. I'm just trying to say...
The FY '17, the title of the page is fiscal year '16, proposed use of projected year-end savings for FY, for '17 budget items. It starts with edge annuity software. These are items that are budgeted for next year that we can go ahead and purchase, and then that provides us, well, at least covering the 1.25 million of potential money that may not get re-appropriated to us.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To get us in discussion phase, I'm going to move to that we accept the proposal of the 2017 budget items, 1.3, so 1.3 million? Board of Supervisors come down on it. Plus, and the items from the currently not budgeted, the NH, the North Stafford Library, college board PSATs, and the Munis annual license fee.
Can that, oh, did you, Ms. Harris? All right, it's been moved and seconded, so further discussion. Any comments? Or can I start with the motion maker first?
My only comment is I did leave off the modulars if we wanted to add those. I think we can do that now in this discussion phase. The $304,000 is a little bit, kind of, I guess, I suppose, beyond where I want to go right now. You know, it's just a little bit of sticker shock, I think, and I understand the need, and I think it's something that we should probably continue to talk about, and maybe if our eventual final savings in the board returns some of that for us, maybe that can be a priority item that's presented to us.
If I may, I think in conjunction with that, I think it's important that we have a look at projected numbers for Colonial Forge High School, and whether or not, even with the addition, we're going to be okay. I don't know that for sure, so we may, they may need those modules over there. And moving three modules for $300,000, that's kind of a tough pill to swallow. I wanted to speak for just a minute a little bit about the carryover capital and as it relates to salary lapse. Again, if we're talking about 85% to 87% of a budget, that, of $220, $230 million that goes towards salaries and benefits, and if you're in an environment like public schools are in the state of Virginia, where you cannot by law spend more than what the money that you're allocated, you have to be conservative in your budgeting process. And that conservatism can speak to anywhere from, to a 2%, 2.5% swing that you may see in a budget in order to make sure that you're not breaking the law at the end of the year and spending more money that's been allocated to you. Well, if you take $220 million that's in salary and benefits, which is the bulk of our budget, and you multiply that by 2%, you get $4 million. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to see in the salary and benefits line, which is the bulk of our budget at the end of the year, to see those kinds of numbers falling into that line, because that's where our monies are. And in the budgeting process, we have to make sure that we can pay our teachers at the end of the year. If we don't have the necessary funds to do that, then we've got a real problem. So, this whole thing with salary lapse, I agree with you, Mr. McCosker. We need to look at it very, very carefully. We need to change the way we do the budget, which we have done. We need to get a better handle on things that aren't included in the budget, as Ms. Healy is astounded to see yet another item. Those are all things that we need to do, but I think we also need to be aware that it's not unusual to have that 2% at the end of the year as carryover money. The question is, how do we handle it? How do we want to work with our local funding body? And I think we should work with our local funding body in order to be able...
Generator?
There you go.
That generator?
There we go. Look at them.
Thanks, Mr. Haran.
Quite a storm. But my point is, we need to look at all possibilities, and to suggest that at the end of the year we don't have any carryover funds or under $1 million in carryover is just not feasible. It's not feasible with a budget as large as ours.
Okay. All right. Any further comment? All right. So, does everybody understand the motion as, Dr. Benson, Mr. Haran, when you made the motion, was it a two-part? Is that how you, was it a combination of...
Yeah, it was a combination of the FY '17 budget items plus those three. So, everything minus the modulars. Is that an easier way to describe it?
Looks like then about $1.8 million? Sorry, I'm grounding quickly.
$2 million minus three, all right.
Looks like the $1.36 plus about $481,000. Okay. Just, I just wanted to make sure everybody was tracking. All right. Any further discussion before the lights go out again? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Moving on. All right. Next item, 12.05. Approve the proposed revisions to Regulation 2401 Code of Student Conduct.
Move to adopt option two, is that still listed?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for discussion. Option two. Everybody is familiar with the changes highlighted in option two, which include loss of privileges of use of the phone after three, cheating videos, three.
I mean, you can cheat three times?
No, no, no. Cheating is immediate. It's other violations, sorry. My apologies. My apologies. And that's Exhibit D for all of those. All right.
This is before school, after school, lunch, not in the hallways, and the added punishment.
Madam Chair.
And this has the administrators with the ability to designate specific areas that cell phones could be used.
All right.
I have a question for Mr. Nelson, if that's okay. This is just, I'm glad you brought that up about the cheating, because it's certainly clear in the item numbered cheating, which is what, number?
Should be 12.
Number 12. But 11, you know, there could be a potential ambiguity here, because it does say, including the loss of ability to use cell phone, electronic wireless device upon three violations of the rule. Which rule is that? What is the rule? Is that the rule in number 11? Or, do you know?
In terms of cheating?
No, I'm looking at number 11. I don't want to have a position of potential conflict between 12, which says you automatically lose it for cheating, which is, I think, what we all want.
Right.
And 11, which says you only lose it after, you know, three violations of the rule.
The 12, the word is this rule.
Yeah. But I think, maybe we can just clean that up to say, three violations of the rule, it would be good to know what the rule is, provided, however, this shall not apply in the case of cheating as addressed in number 12 below, and, you know, which is addressed in number 12 below. Because we don't want somebody to say, "Well, this says you have three, you know, three violations of the rule." I don't know what the rule is.
Well...
Is it defined?
I'm not the draftsmen of this option. My understanding would be that when it says the rule, it's applying to 11 in general. When you look at the application for cheating, or you look at the application for photography, those are specific rules which have greater consequences. So, if you were to violate either of those, then you're going to lose your ability to have a cellphone during the school day. If you have a general type of infraction under Rule 11, like you keep on, keeping on your cellphone in class, even though the instructor has not given you permission, that would be a violation of this rule, and it takes three of those types. That's how we, as administrators, would apply it. And I can't speak for the draftsmen of this, but I think that's probably what they intended.
Well, maybe we need to change it to this rule, is, 11 says this rule, so it's not that inclusio...
Yeah, that's, I think that's the easy fix. It's change the to this.
Included in one place and excluded in the other, and just change it to this rule in number 11. So, it's clear that the three chances is for this rule being rule number 11, because 12 says this rule.
I would change the motion to add that edit.
Would you?
Change the to this.
Yeah, it's just clarification.
Yes.
Second or agrees.
I just want this to be as clear as possible.
Did the second agree?
And you know the lawyers could argue.
I think Irene was the second word she ran away to.
We have a potential conflict built in. We didn't say this, so what did we mean? We meant the rule.
Okay. Any further discussion, edits, changes, comments?
Madam Chair, call me dense, but... Madam Chair, call me dense, but I'm still having trouble understanding. All right, let me read this and see if anybody else has difficulty with this. "High school students shall be permitted to use such devices upon arrival at school until the start of the school day," I'm okay with that, "during lunch, while in the cafeteria or other authorized areas as designated by the building administrator, and after the dismissal of school." But then it goes on to say, "Building administrators may designate specifically defined areas for cellphone uses during the day as long as the area is clearly defined and students limit the use to that area." But then it says, "and not in the hallways." So I still have difficulty with that because it's like we're telling the administrators, you can designate the areas so long as they're defined, students limit the use to that area as long as you mark it, but then we're telling them, oh, but there's one area that we don't want you, is that what the board wants? There's one area we don't want you to have to designate?
Do you want period at area and delete and not in the hallways? I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I want to give the building administrators the authority, the ability to say, you know, this couch area was put in here for a reason and...
And if they don't want them in the hallways...
Yeah.
They can say that they don't want them.
They don't want them in the hallways, yeah.
Well, they don't even have to say anything.
They have to do is not designate it.
Yeah, don't designate it, yeah.
It's by default, and nowhere, unless they have to take a positive action to...
I mean, you can only use cellphones in half of the cafeteria. That's up to them.
But that will be the designation, as long as it's signed.
Yeah, I just don't get it, yeah. I would like to put the period after limit use to that area, period.
Period, fine.
And strike the final four words on the top of page, whatever.
Actually, grammatically, it should be those areas. Because beginning we say, may designate specifically defined areas, plural.
Yeah, to those areas. Thank you.
Okay. That's perfect. Mr. Hirons, I assume you agree to the edits contained.
My grammar teacher would be proud.
Hold on, Mr. McCosker, your turn.
So, now, good discussion. I do appreciate during the technology, you know, committee briefing, that we did put a survey out and 1,149 folks came back. Is that correct?
BYOD.
On BYOD, but it also had cellphone questions, so, yeah?
Yeah, it's BYOD.
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 That wasn't cellphone.
No, it was bring your own device.
Yeah. Well, it was the off-task behaviors based on BYOD, which can be inferred as cellphones. And I sure took it like that, right? And so in 2015, we had 89% of our folks in the school division with 550, whatever that number of folks said, they said, hey, listen, the off-task behaviors are increasing or staying the same. And then in 2016, last year, we had 87% of the folks said it's either increased or remained the same. So it's obvious that, and then a portion of that, I think it was 94% of those, were teachers who responded to that survey in that manner. So, you know, that's the reason that we kept sending this back, I think, was due to me asking for the survey a couple of meetings ago. I'm appreciative that we got the survey, but it's clear that the teachers say that they don't think the cellphones are good. And a lot of things on off-task behavior. And this specific example that several teachers gave us was that it was the hallways that were the problem. It was coming in late finishing up your text. It was finishing up your phone conversation as you're walking into the classroom. It was several of things specifically identified with the hallway usage, and that's why I thought a few folks agreed with that, not in the hallways. I fully understand why the, you know, the cellphones are here to stay. I think it's a good thing before school and after school and even at lunch, but I don't believe opening up the hallways.
Dwayne, this is not opening up the hallways unless, now, with this language way it is, yeah, a principal could say, you know what, my designated area is all the hallways.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay. You know, that's going to be reflected in his climate survey if those teachers are frustrated with it. They're going to have the opportunity to respond with their frustration in the building climate survey. I'm with you. I hope building administrators do not do that. Do not say, yeah, my designated area is all the hallways. I hope our building administrators do not do that. Because I'm with you, I don't think it's a good practice because digital citizen, citizenship, walking down the hallways, bumping into people, the students need to learn, that's not good citizenship.
Okay, so just, anyway, if the hallways are taken out, I can't support this for the reasons stated. I do appreciate the board members working this issue and the staff working this issue. But the teachers have said that it is the off-task behaviors are in, and specifically they mentioned the hallways over the last year, that it was an issue.
All right. Any further comments?
I would just state that the reason for the punishment is to give the teachers some power to, you know, influence the students to not have because, you know, I think the violators, again, you know, you're talking about the violators, and I hope the majority of the students are not violators, but the violators, to a certain extent, suspensions aren't doing much. So I'm hoping this, you know, my intent is this punishment, this added punishment of threat, you lose your cellphone privileges for the year, you know, gives a little bit of teeth to the rules.
And I appreciate that, and I want to respond to that, though. No, I agree. I think, you know, you were a big part of writing this and especially about the punishment issue, and that's always been an issue in our school division. You know, however, as a board member, I feel that, you know, the administrators have the final say in the building anyway to do whatever they want unless the school board puts policy in action in order to guide them to their left and right limits based on our constituents' inputs. That's kind of what we do, and that's why the hallway was a specific thing that was a non-starter. And no, I do not want to give the administrators the ability to, hallways are open for cellphones because that would essentially put it exactly where it was last year. No limits.
No, because right now they can use them in the hallway, but this would only be if the principal says they can, or certain hallways.
Let's make sure that is clear, that this does not allow use in the hallway.
Not putting them in unless the principal designates that area. And I assume the principal would retain the authority to change the designated areas, you know, at any time.
The principal is going to have to specifically say that the hallways are okay.
Or designate any area of the hallway.
Or any area.
No, I fully understand, I fully understand your point of view, however, that is not my point of view, and I think we should not have them in the hallways, and it shouldn't be up to the administrator to decide that. We've already seen the data, and the data isn't good. And so it's real simple. I'm doing this for students. I'm not doing it for Dwayne. I've got four students. I'm doing this for the students, not...
Ms.?
Wow. Okay. Well, in here, it said that it was not going to stay on as a pilot program, and that's fine, but that doesn't preclude us from taking this up again next year should we find out that things have gotten a little bit worse, or things aren't working out the way that we had hoped them to. The fact that we're adding a few more directives to this existing policy, I'm going to apprehensively support it this time, but I will be the first person standing next to Dwayne next year at this time to say, you know what, it's not working at all, and I'll even go a step further to say, let's get rid of it altogether. So I'm going to support it this time. I hope they don't disappoint.
All right. All comments? All right. All those in favor of option two as amended several times?
We accepted a couple.
Yeah, we had you accept them, sorry. Please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk, can you poll the board?
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hirons?
Yes.
Ms. Kidby?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Pass, I'm sorry. You pass by a vote of six to one.
All right. Thank you very much. Very good.
Mrs. Hazard, may I ask for a point of clarification?
Okay.
Your current policy, now superseded, had added to it two exhibits, which were basically authorized use agreements for students and parents to sign. If you intend for those exhibits to continue on, I'm happy to author a piece that would be included in the code of conduct to change what needs to be changed in those exhibits, or you could parse it out this evening.
Mr. Nelson, I think that was going to be suggested that the ability to lose that privilege and to highlight the cheating and the, I think, would be important for the student and for the parent to sign, acknowledging that they understand that.
Okay.
I believe the board's looking like they're all nodding, but it should be...
Maybe we ought to also have them return that form for the impact.
And also to ensure, part of our adoption of the rule that is in the code of conduct now, signage detailing this rule will be prominently displayed at the primary entry points in the school and designated areas.
Right, okay.
And I want to encourage building administrators to post that, the rules everywhere you can.
Everywhere.
So students have, no doubt, they know the rules of cellphone usage.
Perhaps that should be something that when that form is given to the student and their parent, that there could be an attachment to that form for each building, what the rules are. Because I'm thinking that we have some students that go from one building to another, so it's going to be very important for them that they know the rules of both buildings. Because say, for example, if you're going from Mountain View to North for Governor's School, you may have two entirely different sets of areas. So we just need to make sure the students are apprised, so there are no surprises of these areas that are going to be designated. And that's before they come to school, or at least the first day of school.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Mr. Nelson, is that enough clarification for you to?
I believe so.
Okay. I figured it would be, but thought I'd check. 12.06, approve the ESA application formerly known as No Child Left Behind and Title I for Stafford County Public Schools in the amount of approximately 2.4 million dollars.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this particular item?
Madam Chairman, just briefly, I would like to get a report mid-year, if we could, about, you know, how it's going with having the seven schools sharing these funds and, you know, whether this is something we want to, you know, continue to consider in the future, because this is a significant change of, you know, where we were from, you know, this current year to next year.
Particularly, yeah, thank you, Ms. Healy, particularly in those two or three schools that have very high percentages of free and reduced, Kate Waller Barrett, Hampton Oaks, I think it was one more that was very high. I know Kate Waller Barrett and Hampton Oaks are both above 50%.
Wildwater's 46.
Wildwater's pretty high as well, yeah.
I would just like to note, I am certainly going to support this. I did see how the loss of these funds can impact two schools since last year I removed two schools that are in the Hartwood District. I'm thrilled to see that the funds will be used for staff and not as much materials. I'm very excited that we will be able to do social workers, the things that really some of our kids really need in these areas, and I think that this is a great move on the board's part to move into the instructional staffing related to these things. I do know additional materials are probably in there, but some of these ESL, LT tutors and stuff will certainly help our kids, and I know they will be used in two of the schools that are, in all the schools, but I know that they will be used. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board, would you all like a five-minute break prior to the discussion of the next item? Would this be a good time to break, or? Okay. All right. Okay, let's go ahead.
I've got two kids home, and I need to get home.
Okay, all right. I just, I check. All right. This has, Dr. Benson, I don't know if we should have discussion prior to, or if the board would like there to be a motion on the floor. Do we want discussion, any discussion prior to, or is there a motion?
Dr. Benson, have any objections?
That was, well, that's where I was going. Do we want to have a motion on the floor? Do we want Dr. Benson to open? We can...
It's the board's pleasure.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Benson.
To open, if that's works all right with the board. So first of all, I want to acknowledge that, you know, in terms of process, there's certainly room for improvement in the manner in which we looked at what kind of cost there might be associated with copier services for the division as a whole. And it's going to cause us to look more closely at any number of these competitively bid contracts that we are writing, whether it is through U.S. Communities or any other organization that has those available to us, including contracts from school divisions that are bid in such a way that allows other school divisions to participate. I think we could have been clearer in our communication to the vendors. I think it would have been appropriate for us to use the standard language and communication style associated with formal RFPs. It was not a formal RFP, it was a request for quote. I think that staff felt like they were going beyond what they needed to do, given that they could have simply used the contracts as they had been previously bid, more specifically in this case, the copier contract that was competitively bid by Fairfax. But I don't think we did a good job communicating our expectations, laying out how the additional information would be evaluated, steps that they were not required to do. I just want to state that. It doesn't appear that there, we've run afoul of any procurement issues here, but I don't think that we communicated appropriately, and I think that we need to do a better job of doing that and stating clearly how we are going to be evaluating the information that comes back when we do. There have been other contracts that we've gone after where we've used the standard county boilerplate language as a part of an RFP and had another set of eyes review what we were putting out, and then an opening of bids and evaluation based upon set criteria. And I think that, you know, in some cases, we likely will get a good deal with these other contracts that have been competitively bid. At the same time, if there's a possibility for us to do better than that, then we need to do our due diligence in making sure that we're being good stewards of these financial resources that are available to us. Now, that being said, we have a timing issue and a complication with where we are with copier services for next year. We did reach out to the vendors that we previously engaged, and their responses are included in the board agenda item, letters or emails from the companies that offered up either a one-year for the 21 machines that were in question from Rico, either 12-month or 48-month extension, or new, those were new ones. However, Rico rescinded option two as previously presented to the board, which was an extension of the 150 other copiers that we have in the division, and offered up two other options. One is to get a one-year extension with maintaining the 150 that are, we think we can get through another year, and then putting in 21 new machines. The other option is extending the contract year for the 150 machines, but putting in 21 remanufactured or older machines to get us through the next year, okay? Which would put us in a position to go out for a formal proposal, if that's the pleasure of the board, sometime during the course of next year. The issue is that we don't appear to have a way to get those 150 copiers now, based upon the rescinding of... of Option Two as previously presented. The two options that were presented by Rico, the one with the remanufactured machines, has a one-year cost of $785,000, thereabouts, which is almost $200,000 more than a one-year as a part of a four-year contract with Rico as it was originally proposed. So we're in a little bit different place than we were the last time we discussed this. I'd be happy to ask Mr. Haran if I didn't get something right there, to fill in any additional information or respond to questions that the board may have.
So what is staff's recommendation?
If the board has an interest in going out for bid, it appears that the only way that we could do that in a year's time and do all of the copy machines at once is to pay a higher annual rate for one year. And the least expensive way to do that would be with the remanufactured machines as a part of the Rico, a Rico one-year extension. However, it's almost, and I don't have the exact numbers here, but it's about $200,000 more than if we were to enter into a four-year agreement with Rico at approximately $588,000 a year. So it's a difficult place for us to be, timing-wise. We need copier services and beyond for our schools. From a fiscal perspective, we're, you know, we're in the position to pay about $200,000 more for older machines to get through a year so that we can go out for bid in a year's time.
Okay, so the original recommendation was to go with Option One, is that correct?
That's correct.
Has anybody made a motion?
There is not a motion at this time on the table.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move 12.07, please.
With which option?
As written.
Oh, as written, I'm sorry.
With the four-year contract.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion, if I may make a comment at this time. Or do you want to defer to Ms. Egan?
No.
In my mind, there's two issues here. One issue is what Dr. Benson spoke to at the beginning of his comments, and that's process. How we go forward with utilizing contracts that have been used by other school systems, utilizing contracts that are available for us to tag on to, if you will, how we go forward with determining whether we go out for an RFP ourselves. I think we need to document and nail down and analyze these processes and make sure that we have some policies and procedures in place that allow us to do exactly what Dr. Benson suggested, and that's to make sure we get the best price possible on these contracts. I believe that as we go with a shared service with the Board of Supervisors on a contract manager, contract director, that we will move in that direction. We'll get a lot better. The other issue is, we have to get our copiers taken care of, and I'll be damned if I'll pay $200,000 more just so that we can go out and bid again in a year. I think that's irresponsible, in my mind. Thank you.
Any other comment, Ms. Healy? Oh, sorry.
I agree with Mrs. Kidby that I'm not willing to pay the extra money. But I do want it clear on the record that this board was told by staff in April at two separate meetings that we had an option of a one-year contract with three years available for extensions. Had we known at that time that we were talking about a four-year contract, we could potentially have gone out and asked all the bidders for that information. Now, I thank the Xerox people for bringing this to our attention and basically saving this school division a quarter million dollars. Because as was pointed out, you know, by the spokesperson, Rico had an opportunity to reduce their bid. We're the beneficiaries, but, you know, I don't like the way this was handled. I know Dr. Benson has assured us this is not going to happen again. My concern is not with going with this community services contract. I mean, that's not the problem. Because any of these vendors could have qualified to be selected under that. But I think that we need to do a better job with looking at the contracts, with spending this money, with keeping this board informed. You know, how can we ever make proper fiscal decisions if we don't have that information? So I, you know, obviously, I'm frustrated. We've had this discussion. And I was the one that made the motion to do this for one year because I was basing it on information that came to us in April, and that would have been fine. But now that it's not an option, I agree with Mrs. Kidby. I think ironically, it would be fiscally irresponsible for me to want to spend more money just to award it next year. But I do want it clear that we did not, not only was this, in my view, not handled well, not handled, you know, properly. It may not have violated any procurement regulations, as I understand from Dr. Benson. But this is not the way I want Stafford County Public Schools to do business at any time in the future.
Mr. McCosker, did you?
Sure, just, well said, agree with Ms. Healy. I appreciate Dr. Benson coming back with the process. You know, we can get better, we can do this stuff better. But, you know, I'd like to thank Mr. Lee Terrace from Xerox, you know. He's come to every meeting, and he's, he really has saved us $250,000. And this is nothing against Rico. They're a fine company. So, anyway.
Chair, something?
No, not at this time.
Please call me, though, because I have information that will help you save.
We need to move on. The, are there any other comments regarding this contract? I would just echo Ms. Healy's comments, I'm not going to repeat them. So been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. 13.01, approve the annual VHSL insurance application for this 2016-17 school year. Are there any board questions regarding this item two? I guess, Mr. Fulmer, I believe. I didn't have any. Okay.
Any changes that we need to know about?
Just want to point out, the only reason it comes to use is because it requires the board chair's approval. It's not that much money, but.
Okay.
Right. All right, moving on to 13.02, approve proposed amendments to Policy 4405, holidays. I will, Dr. Benson, if you have any comment. I mean.
Well, actually, the board had an interest in amending this policy. Ms. Egan suggested some alternate language, but it's basically to allow us to follow suit in the event that local government makes a change in a holiday so that we don't have the board to convene, to cast a vote, to do that. And, you know, in the cases where that has happened, the board has supported my recommendation. So we're bringing this forward for the board's consideration. And we'd be happy to entertain a change in the language.
Yeah, I would just like it to be at, I'm sorry.
If you'll state it for the.
At the, at the recommendation of the superintendent.
Let's just some information.
Right, we can bring it.
I emailed it to you, it's too late, I'm tired.
How is a recommendation of?
I don't want it to just be a blanket, oh, because the supervisors have made it a holiday, you know, let them go at 3:00 or noon on the day before Thanksgiving, that we automatically allow us to do it. If Bruce decides, if Bruce decides that.
That's not what this says.
If Bruce decides, no, but that's what I emailed to him as a change.
But I don't know if that's such a logical idea. Because, I don't mean that the way it sounded.
It's later on.
I understand, and I don't, you know, initially disagree with what your intent is there, but this is kind of following suit. Federal holidays, then state does something, we say, okay. Then county does something, we say, okay. We're a component unit of the county. So I think it's logical in that, you know, as long as it's not a school day, because I think that school day then does supersede, because then we're talking about all the teachers and making that school day a holiday, and that feeds into our total counts. But this doesn't do that, right? The language says that it.
My preference is to allow the superintendent to make that determination. I don't want the Board of Supervisors deciding what can go, when our employees can leave and when they can't leave. That's what we hired him for. So that's my position on it.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I have a tendency to agree with Ms. Egan. And the reason I do, you were talking about the hierarchy, you know, that, how it works. We have to understand that we are not a component of the local, of the Board of Supervisors. We are a separate sovereign body elected, and we make decisions for the schools. And we have hired a superintendent to take those policies and regulations that this board, as a sovereign body, puts together and to make sure that those are carried out within our school system. I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Egan.
But it's the language to retain, you know, that the county has to have authorized their employees, and then the superintendent. Because I don't want to give blanket to the superintendent as much as I trust Bruce and love Bruce. He's not going to be here forever unless, you know, reeking at Bernie's. To.
I understand what you're saying.
For a superintendent's sake, yeah, I can just close the building whenever I want.
No, he would still have to follow suit. But if the supervisors decide, you know, at noon on Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and we've got other stuff going on, I don't want to see everybody just darting out of here. Yes, I want them to spend time with their families, absolutely. But I want him to be able to make that determination. And have you met Bruce? I mean, I can see him saying, all right, guys, get out of here, go be with your family.
That's the deal, when we're changing policy, it's not who's sitting in the chair right now. It's who sat in the chair, who's sitting in the chair, and who will be sitting in the chair.
And we will always hire people of equality that will be able to make those decisions.
All right, so are we leaving this, that, Ms. Egan, you'll be providing some language, or as an alternative?
Are you saying at the superintendent's discretion, the superintendent shall have the discretion to grant a holiday to Stafford County Public Schools employees if?
Blah, 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 blah.
The Board of Supervisors provides, you know, such a holiday to the local government employees.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, I have a question.
I think we got it.
The last sentence of the first paragraph.
Hold on, just.
The last sentence, can I?
Okay, hold on, Madam Chair. Ms. Ers, go ahead.
I have a question. The last sentence of the first statement, of the first paragraph, states the superintendent slash designate shall determine the day. So everything in front of it, I won't read all over again, even with the line, the additions. The last statement says the superintendent slash designate shall determine the day. To me, I don't know what that means, but the superintendent is identified in here as to have some sort of deciding ability to determine the day.
I think that's, that's the day when, if they get comp time. See, sometimes employees may have to work, whether it's a holiday or not, if they work. The way I read that is, if there's someone who has to work on the holiday, then they will be given comp time, and the superintendent decides when that comp time is. Is that what that says?
That's what that's supposed to mean?
I think.
Okay, so maybe this whole thing.
Maybe they can look to clarify it all.
Okay, understood. So I'm pretty much good with what everything else was said, but all of this.
And we can, some words method.
Yes.
All right, member information, so we will see this again. 13.03, approve, approved proposed amendments to Policy 1701, strategic planning. I believe this is Dr. Benson, is that true?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns, comments? No questions, okay. Just to make this consistent with our strategic plan. 13.04, approve 35% schematic design concept option for rebuild Moncur Elementary School.
I just need to know what that means.
It means the school's not going to be as big as it was, but it's going to cost less.
Well, we talked about, we talked about, you know, 84% and all this other percent, now we're back down, now we're down to 35%. So I just need to know, what does that mean?
Okay, so a design is normally divided into three segments. First part is 30, up to 35%, we call it schematic. And that's when the conceptual phase of the project is developed, and the major building systems, decisions are made as part of that process. Once that milestone is achieved and approved, and we move forward, then the more detailed parts of the design gets done. And why is it, it's important at the 35% to get it right and to get the concept? Because once you start working on that concept, if you change your mind, there's a lot of sunk work into the process that could have to be redone. And it's wasted resources. So the second phase is up to 65, and then the third phase takes it to 100%.
Okay, so this is basically what we just did at the Executive Steering Committee.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing that's, have we reduced the hallways? Have we done?
No, that's part of this decision-making process. Right now, the 35 schematic has all of the requirements from the ed specs built into it. It includes the additional gym size, it includes the collaborative spaces, it includes the size of the building. What this also includes is a change in what the ed specs calls for in the net-to-gross ratio, which is 74%. The architect is recommending 68%. So because of that reduction, there is a cost associated with that. Now, I want to apologize to the board. Some new information came up this afternoon that we were unable to provide to you. And it's one of the attachments, I've updated the attachment. I'd like to pass it out to you today.
Does it strike $2 million from the price?
No, ma'am, it doesn't. Unfortunately, it goes the other way.
He found it.
So specifically, the attachment, there's an attachment that I identified what the approved cost in the CIP is. It's $29.6 million for the entire project. Then I took the construction portion and broke that down to how we break out the construction. We were just informed that the road construction for Juggins, which we were under the impression was captured in another area of the CIP, that the million dollars associated with that is part of the project cost.
But, Mr. Haran?
So we can count on an extra million dollars being in?
Well, there's another, an extra million dollars of requirement based on the Juggins Road.
Yeah, for Juggins Road.
Why are we responsible for the road?
Well, it was part of the project, and we knew that. It was originally part of the project. The part of Juggins Road that will support the school site, right? And so the county identified it in a portion of the CIP under transportation. But when we read, when we looked at the CIP spreadsheet, we got the impression that it was being carried under the transportation bond. But it was still required to be paid for by the VPSA borrow. So there's also a matching portion to that, that the county is going to get from the state. So the actual road construction of the road is being estimated in the $2 million range. But half of that is going to be paid with matching funds from the state. So what this handout that I just provided to you, is the same one that's in the attachment, except it includes the $1,000,000.025 for the Juggins Road. So the deficit previously was 5.3, when we had discussed in the work session. Now it's obviously 6.3.
And I wanted to find Mr. Haran a little bit here, because I saw the spreadsheet that he's referencing, the CIP spreadsheet. And the $1,000,000.025 million is clearly in the transportation line of the county. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't mean to put words in your mouth or even disclose anything you're not supposed to. But there were county folks that had some confusion about it.
That's correct. We had a meeting, because I wanted to make sure that we were clear of this. And this occurred about a month, maybe six weeks ago. And we sat around the table to make sure that we were all on the same sheet of music with Juggins Road, who's going to be the design, who needed to manage that portion of it, because it was state matching funds involved. And so coming out of that meeting, my team, four or five of us, we were under the impression, because I asked the question more than once, that this funds were covered in a different part. in a different part of the CIP. We left that meeting with the idea that it was, and, and so, it was recently when the Board of Supervisors had their meeting last week, when staff requested some information from us, which is in, a part of the attachment. When I provided that to them, the finance staff said, "Hey, I think there's a little miscommunication here." And that's when it first was triggered. And so, we had a meeting this morning with Deputy Administrator and the finance staff to make sure we were, we had it right. And so, they, they cleared that situation up for us, so.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure.
Just so I understand, we had, we had a, a, a CIP item that identified the cost of Moncur and from, from the beginning up until this morning, did not include this cost of a million dollars, is that correct?
No, ma'am. No, it, we had a million dollars in the project when we first, in that twenty-nine point six million dollars, it was identified, and we had the thought that we were going to spend a million dollars in our site work for that road. It was part of that.
It was part of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, after the meeting six weeks ago, when we left, we went, okay, so note the, we didn't feel the road was any longer part of the school's budget because we thought it would have been identified. And it was just, we walked out of there and said, "Well, we have an extra million dollars to apply to the site portion of the project." And so, we were...
And they said, "No, no, no, transportation money is not..."
It's not like we went and spent it, it's not like we, you know, did anything.
So, it was always identified as an expense.
It was. Absolutely.
But, but the way the CIP was put together, it gave you the impression, transportation dollars, we're going to cover it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so now we're in a position that we're looking at almost six point four million dollar cost overrun than what we originally anticipated.
That's correct.
For this, and part of it has to do with site now, part of it has to do with the road, part of it has to do with escalation costs.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, at, at ten-thirty at night on a Tuesday, this, this does not give me warm fuzzy, so I'm just really a little frustrated with all of this. So, the plan is to, is to rework this, this, this whole project to try and capture six point four billion dollars?
Well, there's certain, the second portion of that handout, which is also your attachment, it identifies some potential reductions. They were discussed in the Executive Steering Group, and I think they were discussed very quickly at the work session that we had. But there are certain areas that we can, we can go back to what the ed specs called for in the net-to-gross ratio, the, with the hallways, and there's a reduction there, there's a savings. We can do away with the expanded gym, there's a savings. We could do away with the collaborative areas, there's a savings. We could program the FFNE budget into FY eighteen and use those funds that are currently in the CIP project to apply to the building portion of it. So, there's a strategy. So, there's, there's several strategies. If, and I, I don't certainly want to put the board in any position, but we have a schedule, and right now, we're kind of on hold because we need to have the, certain decisions made before we go and, and expend some effort on the project. And so, if we continue to keep the project on hold, the portion of procuring it, soliciting and awarding in the early FY, or early two thousand and seventeen starts to become in jeopardy. And that starts to eat into the construction period that we've set aside for this project. And once we start to do that...
We need that space.
Absolutely.
We need that space.
It's critical. But again, I don't want to put the board in a position, you may not feel like you're in a position tonight to give any direction to staff. So, I understand that. So, I, I just want to put all the things on the table so that you understand the situation we are in. It's getting closer to being critical that we start to erode the schedule.
Mr.?
And you know, when we're standing in eighteen, the summer of eighteen, and the school's not ready, you know, nobody's going to remember these discussions, right?
Oh, they'll remember them.
Oh, yes.
So, so we, certainly, we want, we want to put you, the community, all of us in a win-win situation with the schedule. So, I just want to ensure that you, you know, that that's very, very important and critical.
Can I just ask a real quick question? This sheet that you just gave us here?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this assume that we are receiving the two million dollars?
Yes, it does.
So, if they decide not to give it to us, we're going to be eight million dollars in a hole?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Madam Chair?
Yes.
The, the, the net-to-gross, that's hallway size.
Essentially, for this discussion, it is, yes, sir.
And the ed specs that we adopted and it was presented to the Board of Supervisors, and they actually took a vote on, I believe, or they definitely had discussion about them, was the smaller hallways.
Was the seventy-four percent, yes, sir.
And the larger concept came from our current architect?
It did, it came from a recommendation by the architect. It's, that's all it is, is a recommendation. They felt that having larger hallways would facilitate student travel easier and promote some of the things from a collaborative perspective.
Which is true and probably useful, but I, I think that's probably the first number we should look at, reducing and recapture one point seven million kind of right off the back. And that starts us getting, scoping down to, to a manageable number.
Scott, when do you have to have, do we have to do all these reductions now or we can do those later?
I can tell you, I'm giving my opinion. I think the hallway thing, we need to make the decision if we want to continue moving forward on the design. And so, that's the caveat, if we want to continue moving forward on the design. So, that's, that's a critical one. The, the last one associated with the FFNE, that's something that the board can ponder, can consider. It has nothing to do with the design, but obviously, those funds would have to be recouped from somewhere. The strategy is we would go after eighteen, so, but that doesn't control the design, that has...
What do you mean FFNE?
Oh, I'm sorry, furniture, fixtures, and equipment.
What about, I don't see a price here for removing the gymnasium.
It is, it's a, it's about seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
So, that's almost a million bucks.
And the collaborative area also, so those three things are critical to moving the design forward. If...
Yeah, I don't want to get rid of the collaborative space.
Even if you were to eliminate all those, we're still short millions of dollars.
Yes, yes.
So, how can we, how can we approve going forward on a design that we can't afford and we don't have any reasonable expectation it's going to get funded?
Right.
You know, at this point, I, I, I can't believe that two weeks, we're meeting again in what, two weeks?
Twelve.
It's practically, practically two weeks from now.
Yeah.
It's going to cost a half a year, that that couldn't be made up. I mean, this is what, what we're being told, if we don't make a decision tonight, we're at least six months behind.
That's a bit strong, ma'am, and I agree.
Well, isn't that what it says? I'm reading it literally.
I've been here twelve years and...
Yeah, I know, I've been here too.
And I just, it becomes a slippery slope, and, and we start to, the, the, the schedule starts to be compounded, the delays start to be compounded, and that's my, that's my fear, that's all, it's a fear. Can we, can we work very hard to make it up? We always try to do that, and certainly, I can, I can assure you that we'll do that. So, waiting two weeks, the sky's not going to fall in, but I just wanted to impress upon the board the, the critical nature of the schedule, and, and I just don't want to get us coming off a black eye from, from the recent project we had. I certainly don't want to put any of us in a position to, for that to happen again. But I'll certainly, our team, our team will work very hard to, to do whatever the board wants us to do.
What do we lose if we put this off for a year?
So, the potential is an escalation increase in the cost, and our team believes it's a four point six percent escalation, so that's roughly about one point three million dollars.
For every year we put it off?
For a year, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thanks. Ms. Ayers, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Ayers.
Mr. Han, as far as the estimates on this, are they really conservative estimates or are they estimates based on the market?
Well, I would say, I would say the latter. We have a professional estimator as part of the team, Bill Downey, Downey Scott, estimators out of Warrenton, do considerable amount of work in the construction industry. So, we feel very confident on this, but again, this is a conceptual estimate.
Right.
And embedded in that estimate is a, what they call a design contingency of ten percent. So, there's ten percent that...
Up and down ten percent?
Well, that they're going to continue to design it, and there's ten percent that they don't know, and so, they've assigned a cost to it because they don't know what's been designed yet, because it hasn't been designed. So, and that's, that's a, that's a routine percentage, and as we get to the sixty-five percent, that ten percent will actually get smaller, probably be five percent on the next cost estimate. And as you get to the end, that design contingency goes away, it's been absorbed in the cost estimate when, because we have details. So, so it is done by a professional estimator with a substantial credentials and is in this arena, the K-12, as well as the commercial sector. And so, so we have three estimates as part of the design cycle, one at each, one at each level.
So, it's possible, I'm going to be Pollyanna for a moment, so it's possible that, given where we are with the costing, forgetting the sunk cost, that at sixty-five percent, there may be savings accomplished if we make a decision sooner than later.
It's possible, I don't, I think we're going to stay on line. My experience tells me that we'll stay on line. In fact, the challenge is to stay in the budget.
Right, well...
And that's why we do it. The challenge is, because a lot of times we go, "We want this type of flooring, can't afford that type of flooring, we gotta, you know..."
And what's the absolute latest? You, you need an answer from us in order to get this, our P.
Very soon, very soon, I'll capitulate on tonight.
I need something.
If, if, you know, if we could consider this, no later than by July twelfth meeting, absolutely. We really have to have a decision of moving forward by then, or, or again, we should consider delaying it.
Dr. Benson, could you have a comment?
Madam Chair, if I could just, just add a couple of considerations. We, we are going to need a multi-level design if we're going to rebuild on-site at Ferry Farm. So, that, there's a connection here between this design and the next school that we will build. It would be smaller, obviously. The wider hallways was not in the elementary design standard that the board adopted or that supervisors had an opportunity to review. So, the board was looking at someplace to, to look to try and capture some savings that could, could do it, and the architects seemed to indicate that they can make it work within the, within the building. There certainly is the potential to give up the shared gymnasium, the community access to the gymnasium, although we don't have a facility like that in the northern end of the county. And what I would encourage the board, that would hopefully be the last thing that we might consider as a reduction, is those collaborative spaces outside of the, outside of the classrooms. I think there are things that we can do to make this more manageable for us, to reduce the cost, to move out the furniture and fixture cost to FY eighteen. However, I, I don't think we can do this without having some cash going into CIP. And so, that comes back to what kind of support can we get to, to move savings that we have into CIP, whether it's savings associated with the eight point three million or savings that we might have at the end of this current fiscal year. I, I think this would be very difficult for us to do, Mr. Haran, without some cash from savings going into CIP.
So, Madam Chair, just to say my piece, I, I really was looking forward to Moncur being, being up and running and with all these things that we have approved, but it's, long story short, is it's still twenty percent over budget.
Twenty percent over the, twenty percent over the original budget?
Yeah.
So, really, it's forty percent over the original budget.
Yeah, in addition to the four million originally, so it's just, I, I can't get there until we do come back in July, give Mr. Haran and the staff some more time to figure out how we're going to, how are we going to get there? Because we don't want to put a design, spend money on a design that we're not going to, we don't want to spend money on a pie in the sky design that we're never going to do. So, let's, let's get, get together and come back with some of these things, and if the, you know, the board finds out where we want to take risk, if we want to keep the collaborative areas as a board, then that's what we'll keep, but we just, we need some more options here because we, we can't get there from here, so.
Ms. Egan, okay?
We talked about this at the steering committee, but I want everybody else to hear this as well. So, even if we said, we scrapped this whole design and we go back to the Anthony Burns or the Conway design, we're still looking at twenty-nine million dollars, we're still looking at all the costs associated with building another school on that plot of land, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, and so...
Road and this site work.
Our, our real quick estimate was twenty-nine million originally, but then we throw the, the million dollars needed for the Juggins Road upgrade, and so, it's about thirty, it's about thirty.
And also on that, how much have we already spent on this project?
That's correct. We've got probably eight hundred thousand already sunk into the design, so if we abandon that, that would have to be replicated, so now you're talking closer to thirty-one.
And are we certain that this, it's not a multi-level building, it's a, it's a single level, is that going to fit on that?
It will definitely fit, it will fit, it will require a little bit more site work because it's a...
But what does that do to Ferry Farm?
It puts us back at square one, you know, looking at a different, a newer design when we go there, if we want to operate Ferry Farm and have it open while we build on the campus, if that is still the premise that we go into that project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Egan?
Many years ago, when, I, I imagine you were here, when we opened Conway, we actually had a design done for a two-story elementary school. We paid about eight hundred and some thousand dollars for that design.
Memory's very good.
So, we have, even late at night.
It's very good, you got it.
I remember, I was very concerned because we spent all that money and then we, you know, didn't use it. In this case, my concern is spending money where we know, we don't know we're going to be able to build it, so why in the world would we go out and continue to spend money until we know we can fund the school? I mean, this would be a beautiful school.
Yeah.
It'd be beautiful, it would be a showcase for Stafford County. But if we can't afford it, you know, we're just throwing the money away, you know, to, to go forward with designing it.
If I may. Mr. Haran?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we in a position that we have to build a new school because we no longer own the land that the current school is on? Is that a true statement?
No, 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 no. We own, we, we own, we own Moncur and we own the land that it's on. We do not own the new land that was purchased for this school, that's owned by the county. And the MOU calls for when the school is built and we move into it, return the others, the school site.
But the memorandum of agreement or understanding indicates that we are going to give that land that the current Moncur school is on to the county in exchange for the land. That's, that's...
In exchange for a new school built on this land.
Right, right.
So, until the school is built, funded and built on that school, the, I, I would imagine we don't execute the MOA until that occurs.
Okay.
Technically, we wouldn't have a choice because if we don't use land and we don't have any future plans for that land, then, then it becomes surplus. And basically, what we would be doing is surplusing it back to the county. We're not selling it to the county or even trading it to the county, the MOU envisioned that.
But my, my understanding of that MOU was that we actually deeded, we have not deeded that land.
No.
No, ma'am.
Well, we can't because it's still, you know, not until we don't need it for a school anymore.
Okay, all right.
Now, you might be thinking about the land that we deeded from the commuter lot.
Oh, that must be...
There was ten acres.
Because we, we actually got paid about a million dollars for that land. So, there, there is a portion of the Moncur property that was deeded.
We did deed.
And that went to, to VDOT, but we were fairly well compensated, and, and the supervisors let us have that money.
All right.
And, and use it.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Any further discussion or comments? I think that we will look at this on July twelfth. Perhaps there can be some additional discussion options, ways forward expressed, brought to us by then to, to discuss. Because I, also, it's late. I think this needs some time for us to think over and look over other options as well. Any other comments? All right, let's look at thirteen point oh five. Approve use of five fiscal year 2017 unfunded FTEs to maintain board-approved staffing standards and full access resources associated with the state K to three class size reduction standards. Mr.?
Mr. Sherrill. Madam Chair.
Mr. Sherrill.
Members of the board, just briefly, for me, I just want to just introduce, Mr. Fulmer will address the funding component on this. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Aberg. She's going to help us with regards to the staffing component. This, this particular agenda item will entail. Teresa?
Do you want me to just, did you have anything to add? Or you want me to give the background?
You want me to? No, go ahead.
You're fine. Quick background, the budget adopted by the school board and the staffing standards, the, you adopted the staffing standards, I think, prior to the budget. But the budget satisfied all of the school board's staffing standards across all grade levels. Correct? The state for K through three class size reduction has a more stringent guidelines on what those class sizes must be. So they are several students lower than, only at the schools identified by the state. So they identified five schools this year. And so in those schools, in order to receive that state funding, we must keep our class sizes in the guidelines that they provided.
So we have two additional schools that are eligible for K-three class size reduction. And then they lowered the cap for Hampton Oaks. So in order for us to take advantage of those state resources, we had five FTEs in the budget that were unfunded.
Correct.
We just need to fund them. And with the actions that the board has already taken with buy-heds for FY seventeen, we can do that. So we can access the state resources. We'll have a little bit smaller classes in K-three in those two additional schools and a lower cap at Hampton Oaks, right? Which is maybe what Dr. Aberg was going to share. So, but I jumped in there, so.
So, 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 okay. So what's the recap on this? It's going to cost, it's going to cost the school division an extra three hundred and ten thousand?
Yes.
For five FTEs?
Correct.
And so who, who's going to pay us back for this?
The money from the state is already in our budget. So we basically have two options. We use the unfunded positions. We fund them, use those positions directly in those K through three classrooms at those five identified schools in order to meet the projections as they stand right now. Or we give money back to the state.
So you're talking about.
And at that time, we're still not going to be meeting standards at some of the other grade levels.
So you're talking about the Title I money that was already given to us? Or there's other money?
No, state.
There is specific money for class size reduction.
At one's federal, okay, right. So state, so how much did the state give us?
It's nine hundred and sixty-three thousand this year for class size reduction.
For class size reduction?
So they use a graduated scale, okay? And if you can't hit what they've established as targets, then they were, you, you reduce the award. And so it just, given the position that we're in, not being able to take advantage of those resources kind of doesn't make sense. Because we would have to reduce our budget by that amount anyway. So we, we, we have enough with what the board has already done with FY seventeen purchases to take advantage of these five FTEs. We had the five FTEs in the budget. We simply had not identified the funding source. We just need the board's permission to move forward with this. And we'll have slightly smaller classes, K-three, two additional elementary schools and Hampton Oaks.
Now, smaller class sizes is always good news. But I just wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing here.
Since this was a budget driver, I think, for our seventeen budget, we talked at length about class size reduction. These seem to be additional funds. Now, I know I should ask Dr. Aberg this question. Isn't it better to start hiring sooner rather than later, if possible?
It absolutely is. It absolutely is.
So in that regard.
Madam Chair, I'd move to, move thirteen oh five to action.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to move thirteen point oh five to action. Any discussion?
I'm going to support this because I'm all for lower class sizes. But I do want to make sure that some of our other schools aren't going to end up with higher class sizes. Because this, this actually, if I understand this correctly, then in Wide Water, Hartwood, Falmouth and Kate Waller Barrett, the largest permitted individual class size in the school is twenty-four. And in Hampton Oaks, it's going to be twenty-three. And I'd love to see that in other schools as well. So I want, I want to report sometime before we go back to school as to the class sizes in the other schools. I'm assuming we're going to meet these mandated requirements in order to qualify for the funding. But, but there's a lot of other schools that.
So we'll report.
Most likely have more than twenty-four students in the class.
Absolutely, Ms. Egan. And we'll report back as to how we did with implementing the standards and what class sizes look like across the division as a whole. And then the board, I think, will likely set some new goals for us in this next budget process.
Right, but we usually get that October, November-ish. I'd like to see something before school starts, at least what, what it's looking like.
We can show you what's in progress. It'll, it'll be somewhat fluid at that point.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But I know I get calls, oh, my gosh, we got thirty kids in the class. I'm like, ugh. You know, and I know you're not, you're not fortunate enough to be in one of these five schools where you're going to have absolutely no more than twenty-four. That would be terrific. And that's, that's good. That's why I'm supporting this. But I want to look out for the, the other schools as well.